Monday, the twenty sixth of May, two thousand and twenty five. I'd like to start with an acknowledgement of country. Lithgow City Council acknowledges the Weiradjuri elders, past and present, of the Weiradjuri nation, the original custodians of the land on which Lithgow communities reside. The council also extends our respects to our neighbouring nations. Declaration of webcasting. I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting is being webcast and that those in attendance should refrain from making any diffamatory statements concerning any person, councillor, all employee and refrain from discussing those matters subject to closed council proceedings as indicated in clause fourteen point one of the Code of Meeting Practice. Is there any apologies? Um, are you moving that way, councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, I'll move that way. One from council, state.
Yep, not a problem. Happy to do that. Do we have any declaration of interest? Yes, councillor Evangelina?
Yes, two point four, I'll be leaving the room.
Great, thank you. Um. Yes, councillor Smith?
Yeah, I'll probably have the conflict of interest with the re-categorisation of farmland.
So will you be leaving councillor Smith?
Uh, yeah.
Yep, alright. Is there any further? No? Okay. I have a set of minutes that need to be moved, so confirmation minutes, can I have them moved, please? Councillor Ring, I have a second, councillor Fredericks. Is there any opposition to that? That's carried. Commemorations and announcements. On behalf of Lithgow City Council, the mayor expressed sincere sympathy and condolences to the families who have lost loved ones since the last council meeting. Lithgow, I would like to personally thank Lithgow Show Society for their acknowledgement and the awards that we received on Friday night. We now move to public forum.
Um, can I move a procedural motion, please?
Sure.
Given we have twenty speakers, which is partly unusual. Thirty of those are speaking on wind turbines, if we could restrict the uh, speakers to the allotted three minutes without extensions.
Are you moving that way?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Are your councillor Goodwin's second in that? Do we have any opposition? To that? Okay, so that's carried, so all speakers have three minutes. Councillor Tysoe?
Uh, yeah, ma- mayor, I- I just wondering whether you would inform the gallery for those that the first, I think, five speakers are in relation to the childcare centre. Uh, this, the motion before the council tonight is not the DA for the childcare centre. I was wondering whether you could perhaps give them the message that um, I don't want to take away the fact that they want to speak, but this is not to decide the DA and there- there might be an interpretation that this has got something to do and we're going to approve the DA. So I was wondering whether you could just advise the gallery for those first five speakers, by all means come up and speak, but this is not the night where that necessarily would happen and it would be the night when the DA comes in when you would speak. But I- I'm not going to knock them, if they want to come and speak tonight, that's fine, the applicant's here as well. There'll more than likely be an onsite meeting, but uh, I think there's an interpretation that we're going to decide the DA. All of this is that the DA's been called in by councillors and um, and then we're just getting a note to say that it's called in and we're going to organise an onsite meeting and and do some other things and then the staff will go away and do a DA and that will come back. So I was wondering whether you could just tell them what I've just said.
I'm like, what he just said, everybody? So, as councillor Tysoe has alluded to, the DA is not being determined tonight. We are only having it called in to discuss whether or not we choose an onsite meeting or not. I'm not going to preempt what the councillors decide to do. So it's not being decided tonight, it will come back to council at a later date. If there's no further procedural motions, I've put the other one that was carried. We will now move on to public forum. And the first one that I've got on my list is Monique Wilson, if you could please come forward.
Thank you, I have heard what councillor Tysoe has said. Um, we would just like to say a few things, there's been some community interest, thank you. Thank you, mayor, deputy mayor and councillors for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Monique Wilson and this is my mum Denise Reid. We are the owners and rate payers at Twenty Curtain Place Lithgow. My mum is an early childhood educator and I'm a justice of the peace and I'm a passionate university qualified teacher. I'm working towards my bachelor degree in community welfare and also have an advanced diploma in business management. We are proud owners of Monique's preschool in Berkshire Park and the DA, that will be discussed at a later date, for the childcare centre. It is a change of use application to operate a small thirty-six place childcare facility in a residential area. And residential areas are where the education department recommend and expect facilities to be situated. Coupled with the fact that Lithgow is a regional area, we have the department's full support on this. I'm a mother, four young children, married to a proud Weiradjuri man with strong family ties to the Lithgow region and I'm here tonight not just as an educator and a business owner, but someone committed to giving back to this region in a meaningful, sustainable and respectful way. Um, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention um, and acknowledge that in September two thousand and twenty four, I did contact council to ask if a pre-DA meeting was required for this type of development at this site and I was advised it wasn't necessary. Um, based on that advice and under the impressions um, and that non-structural residential renovations didn't need prior approval, we began some renovation work at the property, um, because it was in its original state and in much need of maintenance and repair. The third of February, I put all of my intentions in writing to submit the DA to the development team. The thirteenth of February, all the documents were lodged. It wasn't accepted until the twenty eighth of March and public notification wasn't received until the tenth of April. So while I've never intended to bypass due process, I understand now that this early repair and renovation work combined with the delay and the neighbours receiving their notification did cause concern amongst residents in our street and that's the reason how we've ended up in council. I apologise for the upset that has caused in the last couple of weeks and I have advised many neighbours personally that the renovation issues have been since resolved with council. The portal and notification timeline is beyond my control and I want to make it very clear that all work directly related to the childcare components, the play equipment, the play areas, the children's amenities, has not commenced work and that would never have been my intention to do so until the DA was approved. My intention is to do this the right way. That said, the proposed childcare centre, and I know we will discuss this at a later time, will meet all of the childcare planning guidelines, including the onsite car park to meet Lithgow's DCP. The childcare centre's main purpose is to meet the clear and growing need of Lithgow um, and with ongoing development, um, and the expansion and population growth, high quality childcare is essential, not just for the children, but for everyone to return to work. Um, I did do my due diligence and research that Lithgow, um, was requiring childcare spaces, um, especially in residential areas and they far exceed the availability as is. The development isn't just about a childcare centre in Curtain Place, it's actually about the whole community.
I'm sorry, Monique, but I'll need to cut you off there, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, mayor, I think that was only for the wind farms, that was.
My understanding was that it was for all, yeah, we moved it for all. So I'm sorry, I need to move you on. I apologise for that, but that's how it is. Uh, Sam Risby? Are they here? No? Oh, okay. Have you got it there? I don't seem to have it here, Monique. I'm sorry, we'll have to move on. I'll come back to it if I've got time. I'll come back. Can I please have, is there a Linda Sutton there? No, just, yep, if you'd like to come forward.
My name is Linda and I'm an acting director at a local learning centre here in Lithgow. Our centre is located in a residential area and caters for up to ten- eighty children per day and we are proud to be a trusted part of many families' lives in the community. However, I am here tonight to express a growing concern shared by many of us in the early childhood sector. There simply are not enough childcare places available to meet the needs of local families. At my centre, we are at full cap- capacity and it is becoming increasingly common that I have to turn families away. Often desperate parents who are struggling to return to work or secure consistent care for their children. Unfortunately, there are few, if any, alternative options available in the area. This shortage is placing unnecessary stress on families and frankly on the community as a whole. It is not just about the care, it is about giving children the best possible start in life and parents the ability to participate in the workforce with confidence. I have taken the time to look into the applicant behind the proposed new childcare centre and I am genuinely impressed by their professionalism, experience and clear dedication to providing exceptional standards of early education and care. Their track record, particularly their existing centre in Berkshire Park, speaks volumes about their commitment to children's learning, wellbeing and development. If approved, this new centre at Twenty Curtain Place would not be seen as competition, but rather a much needed partner in helping to meet the demands. I strongly believe this, there is room and more importantly, a real need for more quality providers in Lithgow. I would welcome the opportunity to collaborate with them to ensure that every child in this community has ex- access to nurturing, high quality education that they deserve. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Michael Cole?
Madam Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the DA for a thirty-nine place childcare centre proposed at Tw- Twenty Curtain Place. Lithgow and the one that has been deeply upsetting to us and many residents in our neighbourhood. I wish to begin by saying that I fully support accessible childcare and the important service it provides for families but in the right location. Department of Planning Guidelines asks the most important question that council will need to decide upon when considering the DA and that is, is the neighbourhood a fit, a good fit for the proposal? I strongly believe this site is not. We understand that in the items on tonight's agenda relates to the calling in of the de- development application and not the final consideration of the proposal, which will occur at a later council meeting and there will be no doubt the opportunity for more detailed representations. However, I believe that is the mo- the mo- most important that councillors in conducting on- onsite visit with residents in order to appreciate how inappropriate the site is for the proposed childcare centre for the following reasons. Firstly, the provides, the proposed childcare centre is out of character and not in keeping with the residential neighbourhood which established by council over fifty years ago. The legal works undertaken to date, such as the constru- construction on the massive white concrete car park and fence, serves to deva- demonstrate how out of character this development is. It is also is consistent with the covenants imposed by the original subdivisions like fences, no fences fall to the building line and no access to Curtain, um, Muskup Parade. Secondly, the proposed site is heavily constrained. Its shape, location, lack of street frontage, change in levels from Curtain Place to Muskup Parade and the existence of a dwelling make it poor choice for this development. This is not a purpose-built development on a greenfield site, but an attempt to illegally convert an existing residence. The proposed development is nothing more than a commercial venture born out of a purchase of a residential property. The illegal works such as the conversion of attached double garage, plumbing and drainage work, car park and fence cannot be dismissed as, as simply a cost of doing business. They are required to be regularised as part of the DA and cannot be overlooked by council. Whilst the regulatory action taken against the applicant will follow its own path and progress, process, the works are clearly irrelevant to the DA. They simply cannot be dismissed as being dealt with separately, separately to the DA. So in summary tonight, we asked two things from council. Firstly, we asked the council come to site, hear the concerns of the residents and, and witness first-hand the constraints and difficulties of the site. Secondly, the DA was inadequate and we understand the council staff had requested a range of professional reports such as traffic, parking, acoustic, stormwater, ac- access, fire safety and a building code compliance. We requested, once all the reports have been received, that the revised application is notified to residents who made submissions and they can be afforded the opportunity to make further submissions to ensure that the principles of procedural fairness are observed.
Thank you, Mr Cole.
And I look forward to discuss- discussing the matter with councillors on site.
Thank you, Mr Cole. Boo. Tera? Um. I have a letter from Jessica Leafley and Tanio Collins. Mr Elwood, you're going to read them out?
Uh, yes, mayor. Uh, mayor, uh, I know that letters of support provided to council, we've got, we've got copies of it, I'm not sure that you need to read them out. But you do need to go back to Sam Risby.
Yeah, has, have we found the one for Sam Risby? Haven't received it, so they're more than welcome to forward it on later. So the councillors have got the letters from Jessica Leafley and Tanio Collins, so I think that's fine. So we can, and I agree councillor Tysoe, so we can move on from there. We've got Tanya Marklett, I'm sorry if that's how you pronounce your name, you'll correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you, mayors and councillors. My name is Tanya Marklett. My husband and I live at Dark Corner on the property that borders two sides of the sunny Corner State Forest. Sameva, as you know, wants to build the biggest wind turbines in Australia within the sunny Corner State Forest, just where we live. We have seven of these two hundred and ninety-five tall turbines near the boundary of our property, less than one point eight metres from, from our home. My husband and myself choose to live here. We accept that we live next to a pine forest that would be harvested every twenty years. We knew the risks and the advantages. At the time, we knew that this area was more than just a pine forest, that this land was leased by the Forestry Commission and the people of New South Wales can use it for recreational use. We found out there are pockets of natural bushland within the sunny Corner State Forest that accommodates many species of plants and animals, some threatened. The sunny Corner State Forest, as we, as well as the residential homes surrounding the forest, have many springs, dams and are home to many amphibians. As noted in the sunny wind farm, in one sentence, they acknowledges by stating there is a number of groundwater bores within the project. Our property has four dams, two spring fed, the other two are over. We take much pride in maintaining good health in our dams, supporting native vegetarians, vegetation such as native grasses. Apart from the rain, springs are more, are the only source of us and the native flora and fauna. This land is for future generations of many native animals that pass through it and want to move on. For years now, I have been involved in the Frog ID project. We have so many species of frogs, including the spotted marsh frog, Korean tree frog, the whistling tree frog and the western banjo frog and the common eastern froglet froglet. All of these frogs have been noted on our property as well as the sunny Corner State Forest for the Australian Museum. These beautiful group of amphibians make us home in our spring fed dams, as well as springs and creeks or in the scraping report states, bores, which I have received. The sunny corner wind farm needs to build concrete bases to hold these longest wind turbines. Each turbine shaft will be nine metres deep by four metres metres in diameter. Four metres in diameter. These shafts will be blasted and filled with concrete. Having the size of these shafts will temporarily disturb our groundwater aquifers. In the scraping report, it is, it states with little impact, but how did they get their research from? As well as the turbine fiberglass, as well as the turbine fiberglass blades that will start breaking down, splinters of fiberglass will have the B P A festival. This will be harmful and contaminate our water that is used for humans as well as aquatic and land animals. This is a major disaster for many springs and dams, not only in our property but other surrounding areas in the sunny state forest as well. Our aquatic life chain will break down and die, from invader birds to native fishes, frogs, turtles, including native water rats to our birds, snakes.
I'm sorry, but the time's up unfortunately.
And drinking, bad news. Thank you, councillors.
Yep, well, thank you. Melinda Mills?
Good evening, mayor, councillors and members of the public. My name is Melinda Mills and I would also like to speak regarding the proposed Sunny Corner Wind Farm. My home will be impacted by at least two wind turbines less than one point one kilometres from our home and a further four turbines less than one point five. Our community as a whole is passionately opposed to this proposed industrial development, which will have long-lasting and devastating effects on our lives due to the unprecedented size of the turbines and their proximity to dwellings. Lithgow Council's response to the SEAS dated the third of March two thousand and twenty five notes the current assessment area has identified localities within an eighteen hundred metre setback. There are at least a hundred and sixty-one properties identified in the scoping report within eighteen hundred metres of proposed turbines, including some dwellings as close as eight hundred metres and less. There are also other issues raised in council's response which echo the concerns of local residents. However, this document is no longer available on the New South Wales Government Planning Portal website. Do you have any knowledge of why the document has been removed from the SEAS submission? The second point I wish to raise is regarding community engagement. Sameva have publicly stated in the media and possibly also to council that they have lia- liaised with more than one hundred and thirty community organisations. There aren't that many in this area. To any looking from the outside, this would seem that they have done a marvellous job seeking feedback from locals and local organisations. However, when pressed and asked to name the organisations, they sent through a blanket description. They are not local organisations and include things such as businesses, quarries, other developers. The information is being manipulated by Sameva. They've been engaging with organisations who stand to benefit and possibly gain contracts. How is this seen as community engagement? One Portland resident has carried out his own door-knock survey of all the clubs and businesses in Portland. Not one of them had been engaged with by Sameva. Residents within a one point eight setback area have also been door-knocked and were not aware of the project. The vast ma- majority of people attending the Sameva drop-in sessions at Sunny Corner and Yet Home were vocal in their objection to the development. Some people left in tears. I've personally attended five community-run meetings held at Dark Corner, Sunny Corner and Yet Home. These meetings were collectively attended by several hundred local people who objected to this proposal. We don't want this. Sameva continue to blur the truth in order to sway public opinion. Interestingly, the Moonlight Range Wind Farm in Queensland today was announced as being axed due to lack of community consultation and inappropriate location.
Thank you, Miss Mills, I'm sorry.
We urge you to support your local men and women and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Annie Scott?
My name is Annie Scott and I'm from Carew Meadow Flat. And I'm here tonight to show our objection to item five point one, council public prostitute position on multiple wind farms in Lithgow's LGA and to let you know about our family business and how the proposed wind turbines at Mount Lambie will affect us personally. I will also highlight the action group I am part of to help the community become aware of the proposed turbines. As a generational beef farmer, deeply rooted in this land for two generations myself, along with my husband representing the third generation, we also employ three full-time staff and have seven contractors who we also employ to carry out various tasks at Carew. I wish to express our profound concerns regarding the proposed installation of wind turbines in our local area. Our family has dedicated decade, has dedicated decades to preserving the integrity of the land of this area, of which, of which covers approximately five thousand five hundred acres at Meadow Flat and the Tarranar Valley. We have been nurturing its resources and fostering a harmonious relationship with the environment and our neighbours since nineteen eighty-nine. However, the introduction of wind turbines threatens to undermine the very foundation upon which this legacy was built. The proposed wind turbines will affect us as beef farmers by noise and sight. We love our beautiful area, Carew, it is known as a western gateway to the Lithgow LGA at Meadow Flat. We also have five farmhouses with families in them that will be directly affected as well. As, also, we have another two farmhouses with residents that will be affected in the Tarranar Valley. We all enjoy the peaceful and beautiful landscape that is our home and our workplace. Early this month, our farm and stock were on show for all the world to see. We were recognised as one of the leading angus studs in Australia and hosted two hundred and fifty guests from twenty-six different countries to showcase our beautiful farming cattle as part of the world, as part of the World Angus Forum. It was well received to our, to the local area and an opportunity to, that arose due to the beautiful landscape and our great cattle. However, our business is under threat with it, with it noted in the impact of renewable energy zones on rural and regional communities in New South Wales, dated the sixteenth of May two thousand and twenty five. A case where a farm has no, a farm has noticed a thirty percent reduction carving rate and a loss of cattle's ability to do well. This is only one example of the growing number of credible industry publications, many of which are peer-reviewed, that document the detrimental impact of wind turbines and exposed, and exposed or exposure on animals and humans. One of the most pressing concerns is the issue of noise pollution, wind turbines. One of the most pressing concerns is the issue of noise pollution. Wind turbines produce a persistent hum and vibration that can disrupt the tranquility of rural life. For farmers like us, the peace and quiet of the countryside are not just a luxury but a necessity for our operations, our animal welfare and our mental wellbeing. Excessive noise could.
Thank you, Mrs Scott, I'm sorry, I'm timed this up unfortunately.
Thank you.
Louisa Lath, is it?
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Louisa Umleth. I'm from Meadow Flat. I'm standing here, not so much for myself, I'm standing here advocating for the hundreds of people whose homes would be closer to a wind turbine than mine. I care for the wellbeing of my community and I'm deeply concerned that there is an unacceptable level of injustice in the design of this particular wind farm. We've been crying out to council, too big, too close to too many homes. This project is unprecedented, the location is inappropriate. I've been thinking about how best to bring that home for you. So to demonstrate, I surveyed the data on 30 wind farms either operational or approved in New South Wales. Of the 30, 40% had less than 10 nearby homes. The one with the most had 43 and that's Flyers Creek Wind Farm. Here's the problem. Sunny Corner Wind Farm is planned to have almost quadruple the highest number in New South Wales, at 161 within 1.8 kilometres. Not only that, we would have double the number of turbines as that project and our turbines would be 80% larger. The number of impacted homes is off the scale. This is what we mean when we say too big, too close to too many homes. It's interesting to note the recently approved Thunderbolt Wind Farm in the Tamworth region will have zero homes within two kilometres. And the Anco Delta Wind Farm with a whopping 208 turbines has zero within 3.6. Developers can absolutely select locations that aren't on top of hundreds of people. Wind turbine projects are not black and white, and this is where there is misunderstanding between their supporters and non-supporters. There is a gradient of harm. On one end of the scale, there are wind turbine projects that have small sized turbines, that are located on large land holdings with a minimal population density. The landholders have entered into lucrative consensual agreements, the biodiversity and environmental impact of the location is low, and overall impacts are minimised. And there's a sliding scale of increased impacts with the Sunny Corner project absolutely pushing the upper limit of that scale. We would have the largest wind turbines in Australia that are positioned in close proximity to hundreds of homes in a non-consensual arrangement with meagre or non-existent financial benefits to those affected, and the biodiversity and environmental impact is high. Overall, there's a high degree of impact and harm. Given that this is a highly contentious project with impacted homes multitudes times more than any other wind farm in New South Wales, and the largest turbines to be built on land in Australia, backing your community and objecting to the Sunny Corner Wind Farm proposal would be the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Tanya Costin.
Good evening all. You've heard many well informed opinions and facts of why mega turbines being built close to homes are a tragedy to our environment, our life and our families. I don't think you could mount any argument for them in state forests close to homes. It's pretty black and white. I offer you a deal today. The opportunity is to build one, perhaps two or three mega wind turbines 800 metres from your homes. You can experience a lack of privacy from cameras installed. You can experience the spinning red lights at night all year round. Noise and ground vibration that you can never escape. Flicker in the morning and evenings, and then there is that constant view of spinning blades, monstrous in size, that reminds you every day for 20 years that you're living underneath a tower that you had no control over. And then you wonder why your electricity bill's so high and your insurance premiums are unaffordable. This is the experience you must sign up for genuinely. If your view is to vote for any one family in your LGA to have that experience imposed upon them. So there seems to be confusion about community being for the wind turbines being a relevant notion if in fact they are a neighbour with one or more turbines in their backyard. Your duty is to listen and to act on behalf of the impacted community and to serve these men and women to ensure justice, equality, and that the same rights and privileges to peaceful enjoyment of the land are given to all. In not doing so, you make a statement that one man, woman or child is worth more than another man, woman or child. It's as simple as that. Your workload, I understand it's horrendous, lots of incoming projects. Lithgo is the dumping ground at the moment. And it's overwhelming, and I also understand that, but I'm asking you to stand for what's right. It's not to prioritise one battle over another. It's not to pass responsibility to another level of government and not meet your commitment as the council is elected. It's not to bring your politics and political ideals to the table as your ulterior motive. So I ask you to hear truth and stand for your community, as inconvenient as that may seem. You are elected as our public servants with great responsibility to serve humanity, to serve me and to serve the families of the Lithgo LGA. It's not good enough to shirk this responsibility and wait for the EIS. And it's a narrow one month of allowable submissions. This is neglectful when you've all been advised of the issues clearly. I ask you to stand with us, with your community. We are strong together. We are your neighbours, we are your friends. And when all is said and done, wouldn't you want someone like us to stand beside you if you are in this situation?
Thank you. Greg Alchen.
Madam Mayor, councillors, general manager, my name is Greg Alchen. I thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My partner and I purchased a property at Mount Lambie where we are renovating a 100 year old home on 25 acres. My previous association with Lithgo was as the deputy chairman of the Yopin Blue Mountains Local Health District, of which Lithgo Hospital is part of that. Moving to Lithgo, we worked hard to get involved in the local community by joining clubs and associations, including the Lithgo Show Society. We chose Lithgo as our forever home because of its sense of community and rural lifestyle, its natural beauty, parks and heritage, its location being the gateway to the central west, its proximity to the Blue Mountains, and it's less than two hours from a new international airport opening next year. We have now been informed on what is being described as wind farms, they're not wind farms, they're wind factories, they're destroy farms, being developed in Mount Lambie and our neighbouring village of Sunny Corner. We want council as our local representatives to oppose these wind factories being built in the Lithgo LGA. The Lithgo council slogan is "Our place, our choice", and its vision is for a sustainable future, community growth and development, heritage and culture, and the health and wellbeing of the community. These wind factories, these wind turbines do not support that vision that the council itself endorsed. They will destroy our rural communities, our character and core values. They will compromise our local flora and fauna and our indigenous connection to the land. This is just another example of the government dumping their crap in Lithgo. Well, enough is enough. We need to carry out our vision for Lithgo developed by you, our councillors. You are correct in saying this is our place and our choice. In your words, councillors, let's prioritise lifestyle infrastructure and local placemaking. Let's create a vibrant community which supports population and growth and grow our region's tourist infrastructure. We will be less than two hours from a major 24 hour, seven day a week international airport. And what we have in Lithgo is equal to anywhere in the world. Magnificent rock formations, forests, parks, rural landscapes and adventure. What tourists don't want to see is massive concrete wind turbines littering our countryside. At the last federal election, only a few weeks ago, Lithgo supported candidates that were against wind turbines in Lithgo. Andrew G. Apologies was elected as our federal member, is against wind factories in Lithgo. Paul Tool, our state member, is against wind factories in Lithgo.
Thank you, Mr Alchen.
Can I just say, this is our future that we're talking about. This is our place and I'm talking about our choice. We don't want wind turbines.
Thank you. Amber Clark. Amber Clark.
Thank you all for your time tonight. My name is Amber Clark. I'm a farmer of guinea pigs and eggs. And I live in Sunny Corner where 80 of these turbines are proposed. I'd like to say thank you to all the councils who have come to our meetings. Your presence helps me have faith in my own battle against these turbines. Thank you to councillor Titus for the NOM tonight, and thank you councillor Evangelus for your email. Apologies, I haven't required as yet. But I know your concern, as is mine, is lies with health, and I haven't found any research to back this size yet. So so close to home, so it seems we are just the experiment. So I won't repeat the health concern already raised here before. My concern today is myself and the community and its health now. Since the start of my hemiplegic migraine has returned, which renders me useless. I can't drive at night and because of this, I have my two support workers here tonight helping me out. Thank you for letting my dog come here and yeah. These have been triggered by the extra stress basically I've been under due to the whole proposal. I'm not alone with people feeling tense, tired with a constant headache at the moment. I've been bullied by my neighbour who thinks I'm basically frothing with fossil fuel companies and I've been inundated with information from both sides of the argument. I've been called selfish, greedy and a nimby. I've never read a scope report in my life and the frustration of my mental illness and just being too dumb to understand half of what that says is really just making me sick already. And these things haven't even been put up yet. So I'll leave the health there, but as I said, we are the experiment. Once again, my governor's stuffing up my life because of this stupid energy and climate argument. Net zero, what a foolish thing to do. I stand today a person who is one with Mother Nature. I speak for her. She gave us everything we need to make fire and we totally abuse that. But she still gives. We all use all sources. You know, we need to just not use solely one. It will be a more regular and safer system. Renewables all rely on Mother Nature, hence they are not reliable. That's why we have to have tape from somewhere else for more reliable to keep our electricity going. They are not sustainable, they are not reliable. We need to question why are we doing it then? No one is letting us ask these bigger questions. Why the hurry? Can we all please just slow down for a bit? Three months ago, Sameva dropped this on me and my community and there are still people out there who know nothing. Why? For such a big project? I ask you to let me catch up and will we wait for the environmental impact statement to come in next year? Please then, will you councillors, please consider another NOM because hopefully by then we will know more.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Pauline Welfare.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pauline Welfare. I live at 35 Oscar Parade, Portland. I wish to talk about the planned wind turbine installation for Sunny Corner State Forest. My husband Michael and I have a three acre block. Our back fence overlooks Sunny Corner State Forest. We had representatives from Sameva show us their true view impression of where they plan to position their 286 metre high wind turbine towers. Two will be situated just over 1700 metres from our back fence, one at 1800, one at 1900 metres away. The 39 towers that we will clearly see will span over more than 100 degrees of our western view. These massive towers have not been tried on land in Australia before. Sameva's representatives admitted to me that Sameva had not done testing on these turbines on land. I know and understand that Lithgo City Council cannot actually stop the turbine industry that is being proposed. However, the council can look forward objections in support of its local people. This is a multi-million dollar business which plans to inflict continual noise on at least 80 or 161 households which border the proposed site. According to Sameva's own data, some of these properties are 700 and 800 metres away. The night sky over the west side of Portland will be lit up red. I asked Sameva's representative Michelle about the red warning lights on the towers. She admitted that they will have red lights on them, but was uncertain as to how many. The proposed turbines are of such a height that they are an aeronautical hazard. Even if there are any lights on top of the hubs, as the blades cycle past these lights, it stands to reason that they will reflect the lights in a flickering blinking manner. This same company, if they are allowed to install this development, will devalue adjoining properties. I have spoken with three of the local estate agents who all unanimously agreed that such a development definitely would decrease the value of our properties. One estate agent also mentioned the real risk that banks would not be willing to lend as much to someone purchasing a property with nearby turbines, or they would ask for a larger deposit. Historical evidence found on renew economy dot com dot au shows that properties within 1.61 kilometres from a turbine do drop in value by at least 11%. And whilst it still does eventually recover after five or six years, that is only to pre-drop values. This would still leave the value of those properties depressed relative to the market. I do understand that we all need electrical power and I am not against renewable energy.
I'm sorry, I need to move you on unfortunately. Thank you. Dirk Hubble, is that how you say it? Sorry, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. I'm Dirk Hubble from Sunny Corner. Why are these turbines so big? Why so high? Why did they choose them? There is no logical reason. There is no, like, you know, are these more efficient? They might be, but that is the reason for choosing them. They are the biggest ones available. If they were bigger ones, we'd probably get them. Yeah, if they go to 300 metres, 350 metres, we'd probably have them. Those 75 metre long blades, there is no indication how they're going to be transported. It hasn't been thought out yet. There is no logistics that has been done. Yeah, how will this affect the community? What are they going to have to do to our roads? Are they going to build a railway line? I don't know. No one knows. And yeah, to me, this is of great concern. There would be massive cost blowouts. I don't know how you can do an environmental impact study if you haven't thought about any of these things. It's going to be left up to the next owner. Once it's been approved, they're going to sell this. We don't have any useful maps. They gave us maps. You cannot find your house on it. It's just, you know, they don't show the roads, they don't show things that are relevant. I can't work out the distance to the turbines. I don't know where those turbines are on the real map because there's no topographical lines. So you can't work out, are they on the ridge? Just where are they? No references, like latitude or longitude. No grid lines. I have no idea exactly where they are. They're amongst the trees. We have three in very close proximity. One will definitely be below 1.8 kilometres. I would like to know what the sound level will be from more than one turbine. Because as you can imagine, if you have a neighbour who, say, does woodwork and he's running a router, that's bad. Now, what would happen if you had a neighbour on the other side and another neighbour, say, the property behind you? How much more will the noise be? It has to be louder. I don't believe that, you know, it will be like, you know, 35 to 40 decibel. I don't believe that, that, you know, it will be like, you know, thirty five to forty decibel. And these turbines have never been put on land, so there's no studies done. Out on the ocean, I don't think they care how loud they are. But they're quoting it as if they were, you know, your typical one hundred and twenty metre high.
Thank you, Miss Hubble. I'm sorry that the three minutes is up. Thank you very much. Rosalyn Powell?
Thank you. My name is Rosalyn Powell and I live at seventy four Portland Sunny Corner Road, Portland. We moved to our current home four years ago from Blackslund to escape the future aircraft noise from Western Sydney Airport. It was hard to leave our much-loved home, family home, of forty years and away from family. I have been a conservationist all my adult life and believe in climate change and the necessity of renewable energy. My husband and I assumed the turbines would be about seventy metres tall, like the ones at Carcor. But these proposed turbines are four times that height. Turbines of this type have never been built on mainland Australia. They are only erected offshore. In addition, our backyard looks west to the Sunny Corner ridges, which are approximately two hundred metres above us. Consequently, any wind turbines on top of the ridge will tower nearly half a kilometre above us. We are within the one point eight kilometre zone designated as the most severely affected. When I realised the full impact on our lives, I was shaking and crying on and off for a week. Another woman has told me she's the same and other people, I know others are angry. I am very sensitive to noise. According to SAMEVA, the decibels will be no more than a quiet busy library. I don't want to live in a library. These turbines are to the west and north west of us and the prevailing wind at home is from the north west and quite strong at times. A wind travels through the turbine blades. I have learnt the noise is very loud and unbearable. My husband and I like sitting outside with a cup of tea enjoying our garden when the weather is good. Even now, four years in Portland, we stop and say, listen, what can you hear? And the answer is nothing other than the occasional bird calling. Our home at Blackslund, about a hundred and fifty metres from the Great Western Highway, had become increasingly noisy from ever more traffic. It has been a joy to live in the quiet environment. We have a large formal garden planted with deciduous trees, which is stunning in autumn. Nearly every evening I spend a few minutes winding down my busy brain by walking around the backyard soaking in the peace and quiet and the beauty of our garden. The evening light rhyming the fences, our three sheep in the backyard and the trees in Portland common. Quite often kangaroos are quietly grazing and also rhymed with evening light. The sunset can be stunning. It's my meditation time. If the turbines go ahead, our view around sunset will be just flickering light. These last couple of weeks I've been afraid to take my blood pressure. I know it will be sky high. Please, no monster turbines.
Thank you. Carla Graham?
Hi, my name's Carla Graham. I live in Portland. It was only maybe three or four weeks ago that I first found about the wind turbines. I thought windmills way over there, you know? They just turn with the wind. They create a bit of electricity. What's the big deal? Well, there's a huge big deal. And I must say, I've spoken to quite a few people in Portland since then and virtually no one in Portland knows any more than I did a month ago. They have no idea what is about to hit them. And I think you need to take that into consideration and do a real, communicate with your community totally before you make a decision that's going to, basically it will destroy Portland. The entire town, population of approximately two and a half thousand people are going to be within that five mile radius of continuous noise, day and night. I could not possibly live there. I've been there twenty years and I'm looking at real estate sites. It's hard to find, you know, a comparable place for the amount of money I would have to spend and we're looking at real estate prices are going to drop dramatically if this goes ahead. It needs to just be ditched right away. Now, I've got a few points. The health hazards are ridiculous. When you're, when you live close and you're subjected to that continuous noise, you can't sleep. You get headaches, migraines, high blood pressure, stress, and that all impacts on health. Any chronic illnesses that you have are going to be exacerbated. Any that you don't have, you might be getting. Now, the, they're not green. They're absolutely not in any way green. They do not contribute to net zero. They're, they're pollutants. They are manufactured in China using our coal, which we sell to them very cheaply. They don't have pollution controls on their coal. There's a massive amount of coal pollution created in the manufacture. The other thing that's created, they use rare earth minerals. Now, those are mined mainly in China. And the area where they're mined is, they're having huge health problems. The cancer rates are out the roof. People are actually dying. So before they even arrive on our shore and get shipped out and put in our forest, they've already killed people and they've already polluted a massive amount of.
Thank you. Your time is up unfortunately. Thank you. I've actually missed someone. It's Brenda Constable, I believe. Brenda, are you there? Yep, sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Evening councillors and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live at Curly Dick Road and the Mount Lambie Wind Farm and the Sunny Corner Wind Farm are going to impact my family quite significantly. It will threaten my family's way of life, particularly my son Josh. Diagnosed with autism at two, Joshua struggled in social settings. Because of his struggles, a panel of five doctors told us, be prepared to put your son in a home. You can imagine our heartache. When Josh was ten, we discovered his passion for music. He was a natural and learnt the piano, the trombone, euphonium and tuba, reading music on two scales and he plays for the Lithgow City Brass Band now and plays every end day for them and also at Australia Day ceremonies and has done for the past twenty, oh, sorry, fifteen years. He is a total valued member of the Lithgow City Band as well as the Bathurst Conservatorium Jazz Band and their big band connections playing the euphonium and tuba. His commitment is to be committed. What does this have to do with the proposed wind farms? Joshua's home has always been his safe place, but that may soon change. With the Mount Lambie turbines planned less than two kilometres from our home, directly in our line of sight, I fear for his mental health. And for instance, because when we passed the Hampton turbines in the past, Josh has become visibly distressed. If he can't cope with the proposed turbines so close to our home, we will have no choice but to move. Yet who will buy a home with a view of an industrial wind farm in our sights? We purchased our home because of Joshua's needs. It provided him with a safe place away from social settings that distressed him. Its serene and scenic views was a bonus for us. We overlooked the Tarrannar Valley, Evans Crown, Riddle and even Oberon. Our views are magnificent. There is already evidence showing buyers withdrawing from a property purchase due to proposed wind farms in the central west renewable energy zone, where a landowner had a contract fall through with the sale of their property once the to-be-owner found out about the wind farm that was proposed nearby. It's on the transcript of the state inquiry into impacts of renewable energy zones. And we are not in a renewable energy zone. In June last year, I spoke to a gentleman named Michael at the Oberon meeting against its proposed wind farm. He told me that he lives next to a farm, wind farm. His home is about the same distance away from the nearest turbine that my home will be to the Mount Lambie project. His advice was to enjoy your sleep now because you won't get much.
Sorry Brenda, but that's your three minutes.
I also work with vulnerable children. If I'm tired and snappy because of lack of sleep, they're going to suffer as well.
Thank you. I understand. Christine Gardner? Is Christine Gardner there? Oh, yes, that's right.
Madam Mayor, councillors and council staff. My name's Christine Gardner and I live at Golden Grove, one forty one McManus Road, Portland. I also would like to speak about item five point one. Our home and our working farm are less than one, one point five kilometres from the most easterly proposed turbines. We are neighbours of the proposed project and will be affected by noise greater than the allowable thirty five decibel a shadow flicker from turbine seventy six on summer evenings, red lights on the top of the proposed turbine blades and increased heavy traffic on McManus Road during the three plus years of construction. I think renewable energy is essential to our future, but I'm concerned that the current push by the government is an overreach and forcing decisions that have not been sufficiently researched, particularly in relation to neighbours and community wellbeing. And I'd like the Lithgow City Council to consider the following information. There are errors in the scoping report. If you've managed to read the seven hundred odd pages, you don't notice them initially, but you find them creeping in. SAMEVA can at best be seen to be, these can be seen simply to be misinterpreted by the community and at worst seen as mischievously misleading. This report, the seven hundred odd pages, is quite challenging. One example in figure six point one four point two point one in the social infrastructure overview states that the town of Portland is fifteen and a half kilometres from the proposed project. It's not until you read in one of the appendices that that distance is clarified as the travel distance between the Sunny Corner Community Hall and the main street of Portland. In fact, Portland Ridge Street is only one point five kilometres from the nearest wind tower generation, wind turbine generator. Most residents in Portland, upon reading this, would think that fifteen and a half kilometres is, that's not going to affect us. It is going to affect them. Wind turbine noise and health, human health. When speaking to representatives of SAMEVA, their first and only response is to quote the headline statement from two thousand and fifteen of the National Health and Medical Research Council. Their statement is simply that there is no evidence.
Mrs Gardner, I'm sorry that your time is finished. I've got a letter from Tetris, Tetris? Is that his name? Tetris? Sorry, I'll get that wrong. Tetris Energy. The letter's to be read by Mr Elwood, please.
This is a statement to be read during public session Lithgow City Council meeting from Tetris Energy. Read five point one nomination or notice of motion. There is no region more synonymous with power generation in New South Wales than Lithgow and surrounds. The Lithgow community has also facilitated significant electricity transmission infrastructure for many years. But this hasn't always translated into tangible benefits for the communities hosting it. We've heard this time and time again in our briefings with the Lithgow City Council and community. This existing electricity transmission infrastructure and the prospect of connecting new renewable energy projects to it is a key reason why there are multiple state significant renewable developments proposed in the region. These state significant projects, like Tetris Energy's proposed Ben Bullen and Mount Lambie wind farms, are an opportunity for Lithgow to honour its legacy as a key energy generation area through the coal industry by playing a pivotal role of next era of energy. We appreciate concerns around the pace of the energy transformation from both council and the broader community. The New South Wales Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure is the decisioning authority for wind farms in New South Wales. Should Lithgow City Council take a negative position against wind farms, this would limit the opportunity for council and its communities to have a driving influence in their planning and development. We support council to keep playing an active role in shaping these projects by maintaining its neutral position with respect to wind farms in the LGA and upholding its commitment to continue to work with the community when environmental impact statements, EIS, are submitted to the New South Wales Government, ensuring the views of all residents are taken into consideration. We also encourage council to consider the opportunity for Lithgow to be a renewable energy powerhouse in a fast-changing national energy system. New energy investment creates vital job opportunities, upgrades local infrastructure and boosts regional economies, just as the coal industry has in your communities for almost a century. Council's voice and participation can help shape how these state significant projects unfold to maximise benefits and underpin a prosperous future for the Lithgow region and the communities you represent. Yours sincerely, Frank Bowland, Director, Tetris Energy.
Thank you. Can I now have Stephen Leslie? Who's the last speaker? I can't take questions from the floor, Greg. You know that. Citizen Leslie?
Thank you, Matt Coleman. My name is Stephen Leslie, citizen Leslie these days. I have limited time, so excuse me if I speak quickly. I wish to speak on item two point eight, review of communications of Main Street footpath revitalisation building better regions programme. The whole tenor of this very bland report is to prevent a similar funding loss in the future, but that misses the point. The citizens of Lithgow should be able to assume that those changes would be automatic. The real issue, not addressed, is about trust. We, the citizens of Lithgow, have to believe that by the actions taken in response to this major funding loss, that no such investigation will ever be needed again. The focus of this report should not be, how was this money lost? The focus should be, why was this loss not reported immediately? Or better still, why was the potential to lose this grant not reported to the general manager as soon as it was flagged by the funding authority? Trust, what's lost is lost forever. The given timeline shows that on the thirteenth of March twenty twenty four, the council was asked for an extension of time to complete the project. So we know that the council's staff members are aware of time constraints. The council staff members then received several emails in May and June, warning that the grant was in danger of being lost. Finally, Tuesday, the eleventh of June twenty twenty four, email from the Funding Body to Assets and Infrastructure Planning Manager and Director for Infrastructure and Economy confirming that the grant agreement expired on the eighth of June and no grant funds are payable to Lithgow Council. Was the general manager informed? No. Two days later, we get Thursday, thirteenth of June twenty twenty four, request from Assets and Infrastructure Manager, Planning Manager to Executive Assistants to arrange for a meeting regarding the grant loss between the general manager, the assets infrastructure planning manager and the director of infrastructure and economy. It is my belief that this meeting never took place and nothing in the timeline contradicts this. Mr Butler, the then general manager, was a professional general manager with decades of experience and had he been informed in the early stages of this fiasco, he would, I expect, have taken the matter out of the hands of bureaucrats and involved senior officials, including our state and federal members of parliament. Early on, there was a very good chance of retrieving the grant. He was denied that.
I'm sorry. Mr Leslie, your time is up.
Well, I conclude then with, if I may, just.
Matt Coleman, could we please give Mister Leslie an extension since he is the last one?
We had a procedural motion that was moved and carried, I'm sorry, councillor, councillor Fredericks.
I will put it on my website.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, move a procedural motion to bring, to bring a couple of matters forward.
Before you do, councillor Tysus, I have a procedural motion of my own. Um, I'd like to put to the council that two point eight is actually moved to close council. To discuss personal issues. Um, the item. Under the Local Government Act of ten A, so personal matters concerning particular individuals, I'd like to move procedural motion that that goes. To close council. Do I have any objection to that?
Yes, I have an objection, mayor. I have a motion that, um. Will alleviate that because I don't believe it will be debated tonight. I think that report needs to come back with further information and I'll be detailing that. So I don't think, I don't think it will be discussed tonight. I think that I will get support for a motion to, for further information to come back in regards to the discussion. In which case you can then bring it back to council and discuss it under confidential cover.
I'm happy to do that because it needs to come back, it's. But I, I'll move my procedural motion first if it goes to close council. If you vote against that, then I'll come to you, okay? So I'm moving that it goes to close council and we discuss it further tonight in closed council under two point eight. Does anybody have any objection to that?
I do, mayor. I, I'm going to move a recommendation and I'll, I'll read it out for you so that you may wish to consider it. That council requests.
No, I've got a procedural motion that has to go first, I'm sorry councillor.
I'm against it, I'm telling you why.
You can't speak against a procedural motion, you can just vote against it. So I'm putting it to you, if you. Agree with the procedural motion, then please raise your hand. If you don't, then it's. It's, it's carried, so we're moving it. Yep, can you, if you believe that the two point eight should be moved to close council tonight, please raise your hand. It's been carried. So now if you wish to move another procedural motion, Martin? Okay, that's fine. So you're moving two point three, so we'll do one at a time, so two point three. So councillor Tysus is moving a procedural motion that comes forward. All those in favour of the procedural motion? That, that particular one's being carried. Councillor Tysus is also moving forward, you noticed the motion five point one, is that correct? Uh, I'll put that, all those in favour of that. That's been carried as well. So I'll do my mayoral minute. Then we'll do, uh, two point. Three, and then we'll do five point one. And, but before we do that, before we do that, we can do items by exception. Now, before the mayoral minute, so I've got a report here. That we move by exception, two point one, three point one, three point two, three point three. And three point four and three point five. Do I have a mover for those? Yep, so two point one. Three point one. Three point two. Three point three. Three point four and three point five. What report is that? Okay, so that means it's, I'll take that out, so that's two point one, three point one, three point three. Three point four and three point five. You happy with that? Yep. Can I have them moved, please? Councillor Fredericks. Councillor Goodwin can second that. If there's no opposition to that, that's carried, thank you, they're being moved by exception. Has the minute taker got all that? Great, thank you. So we'll move on to mayoral minute. So the mayoral minute, congratulations to Andrew G. In Australia, every three years we vote for those who is going to represent us on the federal stage. The most important part of any election, in my opinion, is the candidates. Without candidates, we don't have a contest. Without candidates, we don't have an option of choice. It takes courage, commitment and sacrifice to run for public office and they should all be commended. The other important part of our elections is the electoral system. The preferential system was first used in Australia in nineteen ninety and at nineteen nineteen. And it has served us well. It ensures that no vote is wasted. The federal election two thousand and twenty five result for Clare is in, and I note that Andrew G won it. Has an independent on two candidate prefer vote of fifty six point forty nine percent. Lithgow Local Government Area sits within the Division of Clare, which the Honorable Andrew G. Has held in the House of Representatives since two thousand and nineteen. So the recommendation is that Lithgow City Council officially congratulate the Honorable Andrew Robert G. On his reelection to the seat of Clare at the twenty twenty five federal election. And that we look forward to working with him on matters that benefit the residents of the Lithgow Local Government Area. Any debate on that?
Coleman, can I ask if you would possibly consider eight point two?
Absolutely, what was it?
I'm happy to congratulate Andrew G on the election. I'm concerned that he did not include in your recommendation to follow up. Uh, the letter sent by Mister G on the twenty fourth of March, two thousand and twenty five. Mister G posted on social media that day. This afternoon, I sent the mayor of Lithgow Council a letter confirming that I'm committed. To securing a reinstatement of the two million dollars for this project by any means. And any funding source possible, working with council to obtain it. Mister G is referring to the grant money which was lost for the upgrade of the pavement on Main Street. Although council now has a loan for this works, the funding can be used on another section of footpath. And if it is reinstated straight away, the same contractors can continue the next section undertaking the works. Now has the potential to save council onsite establishment, disestablishment, and it also lowers the risk. Of waiting for longer and seeing concrete prices rise again.
So what's your point two?
Point two would be follow up as a matter of urgency with Mister G regarding. His confirmation to follow up and reinstate two million dollar funding for the Main Street footpath.
Absolutely. Have you sent that forward to the minute taker councillor?
Not yet, no.
Okay, thank you. So that's a point two. Any further discussion councillor Marnie?
I'd just like to reinforce and just build slightly on, uh, what councillor Goodwin, uh, spoke to. Um, I think as incoming members, I think as a council we need to build better working relationships from the word go. I note that we've got the National General Assembly of Local Government. Uh, occurring from the twenty fourth of the sixth through to the twenty seventh of the sixth. Now, there's a number of key issues and councillor Goodwin rightly speaks to that specific matter. But there's also the federal assistance grants. That small rural communities like, and councils like us need to be lobbying actively with. As well as the federal roads and infrastructure funding and also the economic transition funding. The, the pathway for Lithgow is a whole of government approach. It isn't going to be resolved by us nine councillors in this room every, every month. Um, but I think as, as members are elected, I think we need to make a more direct and deliberate action to connect with them. So I'd support councillor Goodwin's point two and if, if it's possible to expand just to pick up on those other issues.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Any further debate or do we want to include that? Oh, you've just sent that. Councillor Fredericks?
Um, if I may, can we add a point three for Mister G to follow up on his stance on the turbines? For the community he championed during the elections.
I won't accept that, you can move it as an amendment.
Can, can I ask a reason? Because it's the same thing we're asking for the footpath.
It's, uh, it's pretty obvious. Yeah, oh, look, I'm happy to accept it, put it in, doesn't really matter. We might as well do the one letter. So can you reread that, please?
For Mister G to continue his advocacy for the community against the turbines such as he did during the election campaign.
We can send a letter, that's no problem. Any further debate on that?
Uh, yeah, ma'am, I, I just wanted to indicate that in regards to the wind farms, he did, I think he actually introduced legislation before he left. The other thing with regards to the footpath is, uh, in regards to number two, I note that. When Mister G originally got the grant, he was actually in government. And it went through the whole three years of the Albanese first term of government. Uh, so it's going to be a little bit difficult and. If it doesn't come forward because he's, whilst he still gave the commitment before the election, I'm just. I, I note for his, for his own personal benefit that we did get it when he was in government, now he's not in government. And he's an independent on the bench of a, um, a very, um. A, a large Labour, um, uh, majority, but it's going to be quite difficult to get. So I think. Uh, the recognition is that he, he really did get it. When he was in government, how he's going to get it not in government is going to be a hard ask because the person that knocked it back was the Labour minister anyway, so. Whether she'll change her mind, I don't think so.
Thank you for that commentary councillor Tysus. So do we have all that up now? Any further debate? No, I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against declare that carried. Thank you. We'll move on to two point three. Which is the centre based childcare facility twenty Curtain Place Lithgow.
Uh, Mayor Coleman is one of the councillors who called this in, I'd like to move it, please.
Absolutely.
We have an additional point. Oh, actually, the two, um, change point three. I'd like point three. To read that an onsite inspection with councillors, resident and the developer is organised. Before the item is returned to council for determination.
Thank you councillor Ring. Is there a second up? Councillor Marnie had his hand up first. Thank you councillor Marnie, I'll come back to you councillor Ring.
Uh, I called this in because of concerns raised with me by members of the public over traffic, traffic movements. I have looked at the site, I haven't gone out in person. Uh, I do have concerns. I also have only just recently downloaded the guidelines for childcare centres. I need to understand that this facility meets all of those. Um, there are parking issues, there are safety issues. But what I am concerned about is considerable amount of work, having been undertaken without appropriate consent authority. Any change of use of a building requires a development application. Turning a house into childcare requires a DA. So I would like to actually ask the, um. For your mayor of the administration to advise on what has occurred and what action has been taken in relation. To what essentially is illegal works allegedly.
Thank you councillor Ring. Do I have someone who can respond? Mister Elwood, are you responding to that?
Uh, through yourself, mayor. Uh, given the, uh, situation with compliance and privacy of applicants. And compliance measures undertaken by council. What I can advise councillors is that council has undertaken, uh, compliance actions. Uh, in the form of, uh, notices and, uh. Monetary requirements such as, as fines, that's been addressed by council, uh, with the applicant. And council has also, uh, undertaken to, uh, work with the applicants to ensure actions. Uh, such as those that resulted in compliance activity, uh, do not continue or occur.
Well, thank you, Mister Elwood. That, that satisfies me.
Thank you councillor Ring, thank you Mister Elwood. Uh, councillor Marnie?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I note the comments councillor Ring has made about the development today and also note. Um, the need for childcare. Um, availability in places, um, as a pathway to enabling people to both enter the workforce and making sure they've got. Safe, um, locations for, for, um, children in early childhood learning and, um, development. Um, I think the onsite would be valuable. I think, uh, my apologies, I didn't attend the onsite, I had. Pretty serious dose of the flu and I probably would have knocked everyone out. Um, however, I have received feedback about the, the neighbourhood characteristics. So I'd like to look at that in the flesh and, and have a clearer picture, but thank you.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Do I have any further debate on this matter? Councillor Evangelos?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I, I went out to the site and I met the vendor. Um, we had a good look around. I've only received, I've received a phone call from a concerned neighbour, so I had a good opportunity to, um. Hear a bit of that and I look forward to hearing the, reading the submissions when they come in. Um, there's clearly a need and a desire for additional childcare facilities in our region. If we hope to grow the town, uh, these centres are going to be an absolute necessity. So where do we put them? On a busy street as opposed to a quiet one? In an industrial estate far away from where families live? The reasoning for placing them in neighbourhood streets is to provide a similar setting and a familiar setting for the children. They're conveniently located and don't add to any current congestion from highly frequented zones. Uh, it's a beautiful street, it's a, it's a wide street, it's a quiet street, it's a through road. Um, when I parked there, there wasn't one car parked on the street. I, I totally get the, um, neighbour's concerns that the, the fabric of their street, um, might change a little. But no matter where someone goes with these centres, no one's going to be happy. I can assure you if the vendor went to any suburban street in our town, knocked on doors. The reaction following resistance would be exactly the same. Um, I live next to a school, so I know what it's like being, you know, there during drop off and pick up times and noise from children. Um, I, I, I knew the schools, they want to move there, so once again, I, I respect the residents' fear of change, but. The reality is, and it surprised me, it doesn't bother me at all. I mean, consider this. Owners or tenants that like to have parties, work on their cars or play loud music. Up until midnight, which they have perfectly no right to do so, I don't get any of that from a school. Nor would you from a childcare centre. No night time noise, no weekends, blissfully quiet. Um, I'm living proof of that and I never would have thought living next to a school would not bother me that much. And we're talking much greater numbers and, you know, thirty or thirty five or thirty nine children. Um, the number of rules and regulations childcare centres need to meet in order to be approved is considerable. It's highly regulated. It's now up to the vendor to meet all those requirements. If they don't, it won't be allowed. That includes noise, traffic, parking, every consideration. Um, I did some research, this is not the vendor's first childcare centre, they have one in Sydney and it's a very good business, an award winning one in fact. Um, they're highly valued and respected in the community. Um, and. As far as the building works go, I mean, any investment prior to approval. From a vendor, they take the risk on that. Uh, they'll have no sympathy from me if they wasted their money. Um. You know, developers like to be proactive, but I'm sure they learnt their lesson there. Um, our, our future is young families moving here. Now. If we don't have enough of these childcare facilities, what signal are we sending to potential businesses? When others are forced to go to a land environment court in order to invest in our town? I'll probably be repeating this exact.
What of order, what of order, mayor?
Yes, councillor Tysus, your point of order?
We're not debating the DA.
No, we're not. So councillor Evangelos, we're not, but.
Okay, my next line says, when the DA does come up, I hope that all the councillors consider what's best for the town as a whole. And, um, if this does pass all the requirements, then, you know, I think we need to run with it. But I look forward to hearing from the other neighbours and, um, going to a site visit, a second site visit. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Evangelos. If this, you write a reply councillor Ring?
I'd just like to point out that when this comes back to council, we will be determining it. The Environmental Planning Assessment Act specifies the criteria on what, which we can assess any development. It's legally prescribed. The character, the business performance. Uh, the value of the business is totally relevant. We need to comply, ensure that it complies with requirements. And if it complies, it gets through. If it needs to be modified, it gets modified. And that is what I expressed to the residents who raised it with me. That if it's illegally complying, then it will go through. But it has to comply. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against declare that carried. Thank you. We move on to. Five point one, councillor Tysus. Councillor's public position on multiple wind farms in the local government area.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, mayor, at the ordinary meeting of the Lithgow City Council on Monday, the twenty eighth of October twenty four. Which was our, technically our first council meeting of the newly elected council. Which was our, technically our first council meeting of the newly elected council for the next four-year term. The council resolved by, uh, council resolution that the Lithgow City Council opposes an energy from waste facility within our local government area. Uh, the vote there was seven to two.
Councillor Tysus, what are you actually moving?
I move, I move the recommendation that council confirms its public position to our community, in particular those. In our smaller towns, villages and rural areas. On the multiple proposals for the building of wind farms right across our LGA, that's what I'm moving.
So you're moving what's on the paper?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, is there a second up? Councillor Fredericks? Sorry.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Thank you, I thought we were still stalled. Uh, further that, uh, on the, um, uh, on the same night, we looked also. The, uh, the council opposed any pumped hydro project facilities within the local government area. And that was an eight-one vote. So we, we, we weren't, we weren't, uh, the new council was certainly not looking to. An energy from waste facility and they certainly were not looking at the pumped hydro, which, uh, if one reflects on the, um. Uh, last year's local government elections was a major, major, uh, uh, issue in regards to the, uh, community who, um. And the voting, uh, went accordingly in that respect. It was a, a, a large, uh, process where, um, residents and voters, uh, did not want the pumped hydro. And, um, and we have a councillor on the council who was, uh, came off that ticket. Plus there were other, uh, votes that provided support for other councillors who were elected to council. Uh, with the recent federal election now completed and following tonight's public gallery addresses, of which. This is completely unprecedented, the amount that were there. And the fact that, I think it's fantastic that the council gave them all a voice and they all came along tonight from far and away. To actually tell us exactly what their concerns were, of which they were varied and across the board. But we need, we need to, the council needs to also come up with what, before this goes any further, before it goes to EIS, before it goes any further. We need to have a, a similar opinion in regards and a stance on the council in regards to where we stand in regards to multiple wind farms. Uh, coming right across the area, so that at least the, the, the electors, um, the, the ratepayers, the residents. Um, the over a hundred and sixty, uh, properties that are going to be impacted, particularly with the sunny corner one. They need to know where, where this council stands. Not when the EIS comes in and we put a small submission in in twenty-eight days. We need to have a position. And, uh, Oberon's done a fantastic job over the past couple of years. They've had a big fight and, uh, there's some very smart people in the Oberon district and I'm sure there's some very smart people. Sitting in this room and online, who, um, very knowledgeable in what was going to happen with these wind farms in the future and there's. From, from where I sit, there is a need, a, a need for no wind farms across the local government area. And I'm asking that the council tonight state their position. Uh, tell us what you're thinking and where you're going to stand in regards to the, uh, wind farms right across the local government area particularly. And they're all going to be built in the towns, the villages and rural areas. They're not coming down the main street of Lithgow. We've got our pumped hydro that we're putting up against and out at Wain, they've got the waste to energy. Now we're looking at Portland, Ben Bullen, Mount Lambie, uh, sunny, uh, sunny corner, Taranar. They're copping it with the other stuff of their renewables. And as, as the public has indicated, we're not against renewables. There's a place and a means for it, but the reality is, while, while we're doing all this. Our community is going to be caught up and in the next two years, three years, coming to council meetings. Um, getting publicity, possibly going to court at the end of the day and. All this over wind farms, all this over waste to energy, all this over pumped hydro. And all we're going to do at the end of it, and I, I said it the last occasion. Is it going to fill one extra shop in Main Street? After five years? They're going to be empty, they're going to be even more empty. Is Portland going to have a new shop in Portland? No, it's not. Is Wayne? No. The schools are going to be impacted, that's the reality. We're not going to get anything out of this in the future. If they really want to put, uh, renewables in, they really should put the two extra units. Out at Mount Piper because those jobs will be saved. Once the mining closes, what's left? There is nothing left. This town's a ghost town. Go out west, I travel out west every week. All over New South Wales. The towns are dead because they didn't do anything to stop them being dead. We need to stop them being dead and the only way you're going to do this is to stop this renewable energies coming across here. Why isn't it in the Blue Mountains? Oh, Labour say. It's here because we're, we're, we've got neutral members of parliament. That's why we're doing it. You've got to be a fool otherwise. But I like the fact that the, the community's resolving to do it, but I don't want you here for the next two or three years. I don't want you meeting every Saturday. That's your weekend. Your month. There's things for you to do for your kids, your families and everything else. But this is going to have to be a fight that you're going to have to commit for the next two years, three years maybe, I don't know. Because you're not going to win it unless you commit to it and this council needs to commit no more wind farms. Thank you.
Councillor Fredericks?
As councillor Tysus did state, Oberon are getting quite nifty with their way of fighting. For instance, um, they just passed it in their council meeting to do. For council to investigate heritage protection order over their landscape. So there are plenty of avenues that we can go down. As we were told, thirty-nine new jobs will be created from these wind farms, but in my view, that's thirty-nine new jobs. Closer to destroying over two thousand. This is a very rich historical town to do with industry and to do with power generation. But come on, we've spent decades carrying this state on our blood, sweat and tears and what do we have to show for it? Have we got a spiffy Main Street? Are the state-owned roads in and out of our country towns in great condition? Are they in good condition? Are they maintained? No. Are our high schools experiencing top-notch? Technology, have they got air conditioning and heating in every single room that's up to date? Have we got new schools coming up? What have we got to show for carrying this state energy-wise for decades? Nothing. Doesn't matter what government is in, we always get left out of the budget. Doesn't matter what government is in, it's always the metropolitan areas. That get the funding for everything else and now they want us to be a renewable energy zone. What are we getting out of it? What is the community actually going to get out of it? Apart from our landscape being destroyed, our bushland being destroyed, raped and ju- just. And for what? For more metal and steel to be erected. Tell me how that's saving the environment? How is it saving the environment, destroying native species, whether it's flora or fauna? If in order to save the world from climate change means you have to destroy nature. Then something is obviously going very, very wrong, very, very quickly.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Councillor Smith?
I'm just a little bit confused here. I'm totally, I'm totally on side with some of these, uh, projects, which we should, we should be getting something out of. I totally agree that some of them are wrong. And I'm certainly going in that track, but the last meeting. Now, we've got asked what this group of people that have come here tonight that have spoken so well in regards to the anti-wind farm setup. What are they actually looking for? We can, we, we actually pass here now in council to say we're going to perform an opposition against the wind farms? Or do we look back at our last meeting?
No, we're not, that's, we can't do that.
Yeah, I'm just asking the question, right?
Because we've actually got a motion on the books already.
Well, we actually had a defeated motion in the last election, in the last meeting, which went down seven-two. Not to default to the independent commission.
We've got, the motion on the books councillor Smith. Is that we work with the community where the environmental impact statement is submitted to the New South Wales Government. To ensure the views of the residents are taken into consideration in the council submission. There's a point two, request an incoming new federal government to hold an urgent, open and transparent royal commission. Into the current electricity and gas systems and market across Australia. So as to ensure Australians in future have access to affordable, secure and reliable energy. This is the current position, it can't be changed until July.
With respect, Mayor, there's also resolution twenty-five one zero two, which was resolved the last council. Uh, on the Merrell Minute, which, um, requires the state significant development, development. The critical state significant development. Uh, to be referred to the planning working group so we can work out a position moving forward and how we deal with these issues.
So we actually have a position at the moment?
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Tysus?
Mayor, I know, I know that the general manager's put this in here. And I take you through the resolution that Lithgow City Council work with the community. That's all it asks for. That's, that's not the same position as this recommendation that's on the books tonight.
No, what you're doing is you're asking the council to confirm its public position.
Yeah, exactly.
You're, you're asking the council to confirm.
Hang on, hang on, I'm talking.
I agree with you. It doesn't.
It does not contradict either of those two motions, all the one councillor Ring's talking about. It's just, it's a brand new.
I'm not arguing with you councillor Tysus, I agree, but the position in regards to we. One of our positions is that we work with environmental impact statement is submitted. That is currently in place until July. You're asking for the council to confirm its public position to the community. You haven't put forward a position. You're asking if the position to be confirmed. I understand that councillor Tysus, I understand that very well.
Just a bit concerned, Mayor, that we're trying to use our previous three motions to suggest that it, this is, um, um, can't be done.
No, at the moment, this motion is in play. I haven't ruled it out of order. I haven't ruled it unlawful. Because you haven't actually stated what is the position to be confirmed. You're asking for a position to be confirmed. I know the meeting code of meeting practice as well as you do. Um, councillor Ring, I'm, we're very well, uh, well and truly aware of what we've got in play at the moment. So this is the, this is what we've got in play? Would you, do you wish to speak to this now?
Uh, I, I actually want to move an amendment.
What's your amendment, please?
That council notes the report and the existing resolutions in relation to wind farms and state significant development. Specifically resolutions twenty-five seventy-five, twenty-five one zero two and twenty-five one zero six.
Thank you councillor Ring. Is there a second up to that? Thank you councillor Goodwin. Councillor Ring?
I appreciate the issues raised by a number of residents, we're still in very early stages. By excluding ourselves from a seat at the table, we cannot help our residents. By saying we're opposed at this early stage means we walk away from it. What I'm hearing are residents are not being given information appropriately. The map's not appropriate, we as a council can take that up directly with the company. We can work to get a better solution. When the environmental impact statement comes out, yes, it's a very short timeframe. At that point, we can put up a position of opposition. I'm not a fan of a lot of the renewables. I'm, uh, also not a fan of making these blanket decisions. Without having all the information in front of me. It's not ethical. We need to represent all of the community. One of the things that do annoy me was some of the, the protest groups and I did this. With the, um, pumped hydro. You go to a meeting, hundred, two hundred people, we are the community, you'll listen to us. Only problem is I get a lot of other people that may support it. So it's, it's a bit hard to work out, who are we expected to listen to? Those opposed or those for? I want all the information on the table. This is state significant. Even if we oppose, what does that do? It triggers a independent planning commission. You only need fifty individual, um, complaints from the community to do the same thing. And I have no problem with going to an IPC. We're not the determining authority. And we've all been sent lots of information. I'm doing my own research. I am working and talking to the companies. They know my views on wind farms. As, uh, do the companies with batteries. Not a fan. I'd much rather keep Carl going, but in the world we live in, it's not going to happen. As for a dumping ground. It is sending out such, that the language that we are using as a community is sending out so many negative. Perceptions and concepts to our young people that they see this community with no future. There was a study recently done by the Western Sydney University, should be getting a copy in the next couple of days and the, the council. And the feedback coming from these teenagers is very concerning. We're a dumping ground, we've got no future. This is what they're being told. We do have a future. Regrettably, the reality is many of these projects will go ahead. Now councillors can go out to these meetings and let people think they can fight it and they can win. Well, maybe you can get changes. Talk to the people down at Hartley. They tried to fight the road and nowhere. It's still there. The best they could have hoped for was to get modifications. Now, listening to the residents tonight, not having a map that shows you exactly that a resident. Or a member of council can look at and go, right, that's where they're proposing a wind turbine. I can see how far it is away from the building. Isn't good enough. We need that information out there. We need to ensure that they're treating the community fairly. And they're going, they're going to list a hundred and thirty groups they've talked to. It's all a ticket box. That's all the government cares about. There have been public, um, meetings or public displays in at Portland. Maybe they weren't, um, advertised well enough, I don't know, but we can go back and we can work with the company to try and get it enhanced. But when it comes back to councillors and EIS. Yep, by all means, we do have the option at that point to go, no, we object on behalf of the community. It will trigger an independent planning commission. Then it's up to what goes to the independent planning commission. Now, as I said earlier about the DA for the childcare centre. What you can oppose is very, it's, it's well defined in the legislation, what you can attack on. And I appreciate the views that would be destroyed for people. It's no different to a two-story house being built and impacting on someone in one of the towns. View is not protected by the law. So we need to really look at the information to get better acquainted, to work to try and get a better outcome for the community. Just saying no to everything. We're not going to end up with anything. Regardless of what anyone thinks, we are moving away from coal, which is unfortunate. There'll be no discussion on nuclear. Once again, that's probably unfortunate, but there are a lot of people that don't support it. What's it leave us with? Renewables. We're not a dumping ground. Bottom line, it doesn't matter what governments say, businesses will go where they see a commercial profit. The infrastructure is already sitting here. That's it. They can get it in there. It's not far to Sydney where the population uses the power. We've got the transmission lines, that's why, these are commercial decisions. We are a national party seat, as, as for members' bills going up opposing. The last government changed the legislation to allow these wind farms in the state forest. This government's not going to change that legislation. They're not going to care about a safe national party seat. That's the reality of politics. We need to find a way to make this work for the community.
Councillor Goodwin?
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. I've listened to all of the great speakers and, and their arguments and their very thought-out arguments. But for me, nothing formal has come to council from Somne- Somniva or Tetris. As a councillor, I need to review any proposal that comes before me. Yes, I've been to the wind farm meetings with the community and I've heard their concerns. I've been in meetings with both Som- Somniva and Tetris and I've asked them about some of their concerns, residents have, and they've been answered. I need to keep a level head and make my decisions based on facts and what's put before me. I won't be going to be drawn into making any decision about proposals that have not come before me or the council. Every person, business and industry who wants to develop in our LGA should come to us expecting a fair and proper process. For every item they submit. A blanket no is not offering procedural fairness and in my opinion leaves council open to litigation. If you want to know my thoughts. Um, Lithgow's set up for coal-fired power stations. I'd like to see that continue, but that's not going to be the case. I'm at the moment neutral. I'm Switzerland at the moment. If these proposals are significant or state significant, it won't come to council. And EIS will be forthcoming and it will have to stand up to the community standards. I've been told on many occasions by ministers, advisers and people here at council that if we vote no for proposals, then we won't have a seat at the table. And we just get what we're being given. I'd like to have a seat at the table if it's coming, even though I might not like it. I won't cut my nose off to spite my face. In five to ten years, when they come, if they come. I wanna be able to ask for community upgrades that we can't afford, roads that we can't fix and villages that need support. We need to be at that table demanding our share of, of the pie. Uh, we have a position and, and that's what I'm sticking to.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. Any further debate on the amendment?
Uh, speak against the amendment, of course.
Yeah, yes, I'm happy to, for you to speak against it. Before you speak against it councillor Tysers, I'd like to speak for it. Though, actually councillor Tysers, you go first, then I'll go after you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, speaking against the amendment, um. The, the debate that I just heard tells me that we're going to approve a state significant project, which is absolute rubbish. The state government's going to approve it and we're going to have this little bit of say as a council, as one authority. Uh, fifty other, five hundred other people, residents and everything, will have a bigger say than what we will. Uh, we have a, we have a, a voice on waste to energy. We told the community what we wanted. We told the committee what we wanted on the, uh, the other issue as well, the, um, uh, the pump hydro. We said we didn't want it. I, I don't see what the problem is, but it, it's sounding like we're, that we're gonna be the approval authority. We're not. By the time the E I S comes out, see you later. It's already got a company seal on it. It's got the state government seal. The reality is, uh, the one it's, um, sunny corner is all in state forests. We're not getting a scent, we're not getting a grass razoo. The state forest is getting the money. That's, they're going broke. That's why they've put their hand up and said. Lay them out in state forest land. So they're gonna clear all this. Fifty metres, hundred metres wide for everything that they do, kilometers wide, gonna take out all the trees, all the graves, see you later. And we're not gonna see one red scent. We've got a, a proposal on tonight to get some money out of wind farm rezoning. The amount of money coming out of that, you, you, you wouldn't even do probably a kilometer of Tarrano Road. That's what you're gonna get every year. There, there's no money in these things for us as a committee. But there is a, a fantastic great loss for the residents that are gonna lose the value of their properties. You've all improved your properties over many, many years. Uh, you, you build it up, you solve it with all the, you know. The, the calming thing that goes with sunny corner and Mount Lemmy and Tarrano and everything else. You've lived there for, you know, you've got generations going over a hundred years. All that's gonna be destroyed because you're gonna look at three hundred meter towers. That's real. We're not the authority. We need to tell the authorities now what we're doing. And I'm just looking for a decision, exactly what we did on pump hydro, exactly what we did on waste energy. If we can do it on those two things, why can't we tonight? State our position, tell, and tell the public what we're looking for. That's what we're looking for. Stay significant, uh, E I S, gone. It's, it's a rubber stamp before it gets to E I S. Waste of time.
Thank you councillor Tysers. We have a position of opposition in regards to the pump hydro. I met with honourable Paul Scully. I said to Mr Scully, well, the minister, we have a position of opposition in regards to the pump hydro. He said, yes. Mayor Coleman, I know. The discussion was cut, lost. He did not want to hear any further. The reality is that that's now going to the state government. It is going to the state government. The environmental impact statement is the only opportunity we have as a lever in regards to support or opposition. If we do a position of opposition now, we don't have dialogue with the community or. With the company. We need to collect data. We need to understand what they're doing. We need to represent you. Now, we all know about the proposed workers' camp that's going ahead. Or potentially going ahead in regards to the pump hydro behind Hassan's Walls Road. Now, I've got residents coming to me in regards to that project and I say to them. They're not talking to us. We have a position of opposition. I don't like that. I don't like the fact they're not talking to you. We have a position of opposition in regards to the pump hydro. They're not obligated to speak to us. They're not obligated. They are, but they're not obligated. We need to ensure at the moment, while it's still new. That we have dialogue with both the community and with the company. Because we won't get the information we need. I personally are putting together a submission in regards to the environmental impact statement. I personally have issues regarding this project. There are red flags for me and I will put it in myself. Not Mayor Cassandra Coleman, but citizen Cassandra Coleman, because I have red flags in regards to this project. We have to wait for the environmental impact statement. The council can collect the data on your behalf. We can collect your submissions on your behalf. And put it as part of our environmental impact statement. We have to wait for the environmental impact statement. Having a position one way or another is preempting what's going to happen. We need to understand. We need to have the data, cause at the end of the day, knowledge is power. So, if there's any further debate, you've spoken, councillor Fredericks on this matter. Um, not on the amendment, sorry, I'll come back to you. Sorry, I apologize. Councillor Evangelitis?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I'm a bit confused. I agree with councillor Tysers. I agree with councillor Ring and Goodwin. Um. Uh, I mean, I've done my own stuff. I, I'm glad you said that, so I've, I've been doing exactly the same. I'm for renewables. Um, I've read every bit of information sent to me. Um, I went to one of the meetings and, um. You know, even things like the distance of kilometres. Um, factored in for the new size. And I asked a question about size. I said, you know, can't we get smaller ones? But the reality is, is. It's like, you know, why would you make a slower car with the technology there, you still build a faster one. So it's the same thing. The bigger the, the tower. The more energy and the more profit and they're not even considering smaller ones. So that was my first thing. Um, so it seems to me the number is the big thing. Um, and, you know, by my own studies, is three point five kilometres should be the, the minimum of that sort of increase and. All, all the wind farms that I've seen physically myself overseas. Don't have anywhere near the amount of residents these ones do. So they're, they're kind of the triggers for me and I, I've. You know, I'm for renewables, um. So, you know, on a personal level, I, I will be making a submission that I, I feel. Um, that that's not appropriate where it is. That, but, you know, everything else I've read about the reality of these things is that they're coming. Our, sadly, our history is, is, is not working for us. We've just got this amazing infrastructure. You should see their eyes light up. About our infrastructure. Um, we're, we're just so perfectly located for them. I, I, I mean, I think it's great that, um, one wind farm was rejected due to lack of consultation. So if that, that's gonna be an avenue. Go for it. I think, um, all community consultation is just ticking boxes. I think we can all acknowledge that to a degree. Um, yeah, so I don't know. I mean, I, like I said, I agree with, uh, everyone. Um, so, yeah, um, I'm gonna vote for the amendment. Um, but I agree with councillor Tysers. I'm happy to say no to these, um. Wind farms, but I'll have to do that on a, a personal level.
Thank you councillor Fredericks.
Look, I won't be agreeing with the amendment because. Our community needs to know where council will stand. Will they stand with the ones showing up? Or will they stand with the ones screaming from home? Okay, the letter that Tetris had yous read out, I don't know if yous caught it. Should Lithgo City Council take a negative position against wind farms? This would limit opportunity for council and its communities to have a driving influence in their planning and development. Where's our current opportunity to have a driving influence in the planning and development? That's the first part. Now, let's face facts, these turbines are going in state forest. Council has no jurisdiction over state forest in any way, shape or form. It's just like we don't have any jurisdiction over private property in any way, shape or form. That's where these guys are put and everything. So, we already have no say. We already have no influence. It was us who reached out to them to come and speak to us. Don't you think their first step should have been to reach out to council and then do appropriate community consultations? These are companies whose sole core is their profit margins. They don't give a damn about this L G A. They don't wanna make Lithgo a new renewable hub to improve our economy. To keep us going, to keep us trotting along the line. They see our area and they see dollar signs. Little people, not in the city, often ignored by politicians left, right and centre. No one's gonna care what we put up there. They're not gonna care if we don't do proper community consultations. They're not gonna care if we're endangering the community because shock horror, Someva doesn't even know what their things are made out of. I'm sorry, but if you're pushing to build something, aren't you meant to know what's in it? So, I mean. We can stand together. And do what is actually best for our L G A. Or we can stand back and allow politicians and companies that. Don't give a damn about us in any way, shape or form and only see dollar signs. I mean, look at today, news today. Energy is about to go up another ten percent from the first of July. Um, if these wind turbines and farms and solar hydro, they all worked, why are we about to be hit? Again with an energy rise. I'll tell you why, because our government is so hell-bent in subsidising these things, instead of focusing on what actually works. It's coming out of the consumers. We're having to pay more for something that is clearly not. Working to the standards we need it to. And I'm sorry, but any councillor who's not going to vote. Or is going to choose to vote on a personal capacity outside of council. Look at all the people that showed up tonight. Listen to the ones that are on Facebook right now going off. What are we meant to do? Are we meant to turn our backs on the community that elected us? The ones that dragged their butts in this weather? To sit here and tell us exactly how it's going to affect them? Or are we meant to listen to those that are staying silent, that aren't contacting us? Are we meant to bow over to corporations? That really do not care about anything except their dollar margins. Choice is all up to you. I know what way I'm voting and my conscience is clear. Is yours.
Councillor Smith?
There's two avenues we're looking at, and this is what I was alluding to earlier. And you actually braced upon that Munde go about, if we jump in now, we say no, this is what happened with the hydro. And we actually had a, a letter and information sent to us that they weren't going to converse with us anymore, which they hardly have. And this is where there's two arguments here. We're both going down the same track with the same idea. But we've gotta work out which is the best strategic plan. Do you jump in and do this now and say you're gonna put a ban on it? Like we have done with other things that we haven't seen have gotten traction off? Or do we go into the, go into the forum with some sort of argument to get the best we can? Now, you can make that decision. I think everybody's in the same, pretty well in the same path of saying, yeah, we're against these things. But, which is the best way to go about it?
Thank you councillor Smith. Any further debate on the amendment, councillor Martin?
I'll speak briefly. Um. I've, uh, opposed a number of proposals in the past. Um. I'm carefully considering the advantage of that early-stage approach. Uh, with the pump hydro, we now find we've got a work camp being proposed. It's not being proposed for any other reason that. They believe they're going to go forward with the pump hydro. Um, I voted against waste energy. I couldn't see its ability to contain its impacts. On the surrounding communities. Uh, we now find that. We have a situation where the previous government gave us an indication that it was over. Uh, anyone that used the drop-down box on the E P A website found that the map could be redrawn. At any stage. And so we now find that's reappearing. Um, like councillor Smith, I've gotta carefully consider strategically the pathway forward. It's clear, and I don't know that many people could contest, that the proposal as we understand it. Is full of concerns and compromises that need to be made to satisfy the community. Um, there's the questions about the height of towers. There's a question about the use of ridge lines. To achieve maximum wind generation. Um, there's certainly significant concerns that people have raised about the density of these towers within. Um, within the immediate radius adjoining residential settings. So, there is a, a compelling case that's been built and I appreciate everyone who's written to me. I may not be. As, as present visually to people as a councillor, but I am working away on this. I'm looking at what's happening in other settings. Um, and I appreciate everyone coming in tonight. I've just gotta be clear that I don't push us out of the conversation. Um, it felt good to have a community in the council that said no to both those proposals. But both those proposals are binding themselves through the pathway of state significance it. And I'm not sure whether my strategy with both of those actually. Has given the community maximum benefit for our input. So. That, that's where I sit on it. I'm not, I, I, I'm not. I don't know that it's a value just, it'll, it'll make us feel more solid, it'll make us feel more supported. But I don't know in the end of the day that it's actually gonna give us, uh, strength in the argument as we go along.
Um, excuse me, please do not. So, I'm going to put the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand. Thank you. The, all those against, the matter's been carried. The, so the amendment now becomes the motion. So I'll put, I'll put the motion forward. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. An amendment, a division has been called, sorry. Please raise your hand for the division. In favour, councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith. Councillor Martin, councillor Coleman. All those against, please raise your hand. Councillor Fredericks, councillor Tysers, the amendment. The motion's been carried. Thank you.
But Mayor, could you, could you indicate what the motion was for the benefit of the public so that they know exactly what we have voted? Six, two, one.
So we mu- we voted to note the management's comment. Which was that the council notes the report and the existing resolutions in relation to wind farms and the state significant development. Specifically Resolutions twenty five to seventy five, twenty two to one oh two and twenty five to one oh six. So we've just basically noted what we've already confirmed. Thank you. We now move on.
Congratulations.
So, you, you're more, you're free to leave if you like. Thank you. We'll call, uh, if I could have someone move that we, um, go into recess, please, for councillor Fredericks?
Yeah, move.
Councillor Ring, if there's no opposition to that, fifteen minutes, thank you. Welcome back. Can I have a procedural motion that we move back into council, please? Councillor Ring, seconda, please. Councillor Martin, is there any opposition to that? No, carried. Thank you. We move on to item two point two, local government remuneration tribunal determination page.
Move the recommendation, Mayor.
You're moving the recommendation as it is?
No, no, I'll be changing it.
Page eight. What are you moving, Councillor Tyssus?
Recommendation is one that the mayor and council formally decline the local government re, remuneration tribunal's determination of a three percent annual pay increase from the first of July twenty five. And number two is that the mayor and council's remuneration for the next one to year in twenty five, twenty six remain the same as at present, twenty four, twenty five remuneration fees. That is that the council's fees to remain as present at fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the mayor will fee to remain at, as present at thirty one, seven, six, five, and the car lease payable by the mayor remain at as present at nil. I'll move that recommendation.
Uh, seconda, I'm assuming Councillor Fredericks. Are you seconding this motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Fredericks. Um, Councillor Tyssus, wish you wish to speak to it?
Uh, I won't speak to it, Mayor. It's pretty self-explanatory and, uh, I think in a cost of living crisis, I think it's only appropriate that the councillors, uh, not take up the option of a three percent annual pay rise.
Thank you, Councillor Tyssus. Councillor Fredericks?
Well, if anyone on this council should be jumping at more money, it's me. This is my only form of income, but is it really necessary? I mean, what, it's an extra thirty seven dollars for councillors a month? Uh, that money can be better spent in, I don't know, being redirected into our roads or events or something. I don't think we, we really need that. So that's why I'm supporting Martin's motion here, uh, Councillor Tyssus's motion, sorry.
Thank you, Councillor Fredericks. Do I have any further debate on this matter? Councillor Evangelitis and then Councillor Goodwin.
Um, I, I won't support the amendment. It's, it's eight dollars a week, but I wouldn't mind. I, I'm a member of a lot of committees. I don't claim anything from council. I drove out to all the suburban area. Every time someone wants me to go see something, I go and see it. I don't give council the receipt or anything. Um, so, and it's, you know, it's with the, um, the cost of living, it's just moving it up. So I, I lo, I want that eight dollars a week.
Thank you. Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mayor Coleman. We need this increase, um, with C P I. Uh, we, or we'll find ourselves, uh, in the same position that we found ourselves in the last time we had to make this decision. Our time, our expertise, it's worth, uh, it's worth it. New councillors will agree that this is a lot of work that we all do on a weekly basis. I wish it was taken out of our hands and the government decided on the remuneration, but it's not, it's all left up to us. So, uh,
Are you moving something else, Councillor?
No, I'm, I'm moving that, um, I'm not moving anything.
You're just, you're just speaking.
Saying that, um, not, not voting for it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councillor Goodwin. Councillor Ring?
I'm moving the amendment. I'm moving the amendment that, um, council accepts the three percent rise recommended by the tribunal. Someone seconds it and I'll speak to it.
Uh, can I have a second to please? Councillor Evangelitis?
Yeah.
That's a point of order. That's, is that not indirect contradiction?
Give me a second. It should be foreshadowed. You'll have to foreshadow it.
All right, then I'll foreshadow the motion.
So that, thank you, Councillor Tyssus, that has to be foreshadowed. So you're foreshadowing a motion then, Councillor Ring. Thank you.
I won't, I won't be supporting, uh, the motion as put.
Thank you, Councillor Ring. Uh, any further debate on the actual motion? Right?
Sorry, Mayor. Can we just be clear? So at the moment, the motion
Sorry, may, can we just be clear, so at the moment, the motion that's sitting in front of us is that we, uh, maintain our salaries as they stand.
Remaintain status quo councillor.
Okay.
Um, Marney, and there's a foreshadowed motion.
All right, thank you, may, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to this and, and, um, people probably aware I voted against the last two pay rises, that the, uh, the second one was a substantial pay rise that exceeded well outside the tribunal's recommendation. I voted against them in that term because we did, we brought in to play a, uh, a rate rise of twenty seven point seven per- percent for the, the, um, the average punter in my street. And I was going home with a pay rise that was the equivalent of the rate rise. So I was making decisions that had no impact on me. Um, keeping that in mind, even though I voted and there was one other councillor that voted against it, both of us received the pay rise. That's the important piece that people need to understand here. Uh, unless we uniformly vote against the pay rise, all councils will receive the pay rise. Um, I'm willing to accept that what's been brought forward is in keeping with CPI across a whole lot of industry sectors, a three percent increase is modest. And I'm happy to support it. Um, keep in mind that I had to make some decisions myself on how I use the pay rise that I was afforded, even though I voted against it. So the optics of what I did in the last term may well have presented a situation where I forewent that money. It, it didn't happen, it appeared in the pay slip every month as part of our allowance. Now, people can choose to, through their own set of ethics, how they deal with that situation. Uh, but I think what's in front of us is not unreasonable. And I think that I'm, I'm willing to support the return to a three yearly review by the independent tribunal, which will set uh, things that are in keeping with CPI, understanding that councillors may have different economic capacities to absorb the costs of being a councillor, so, um, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you councillor Marney, any further debate on this particular motion that's put forward by councillor Tysus? No, write a reply councillor Tysus if you'd like.
Uh, yes, mayor, uh, mayor, she's probably aware, um, the council's, uh, prior, it, in the last term of council approved a, a rate rise that was well over the three percent. In fact, it went quite high and I don't, I think it was about twenty five percent the pay rise at that time. So the reality is, I, I, I don't think we, you know, you, I think you're stretching it, uh, trying to catch up with CPI, you you did CPI and a bit more and a bit more and a bit more on the last occasion, and I don't think it's appropriate on this occasion to come up with another three percent, even if it is keeping you with CPI. But you jumped up so much on the last occasion, uh, that status quo should remain for the next one each year. And that's the reason for this motion, I think anything, uh, anything, even three percent is not going to be acceptable by the the rate payers and residents with this council, given, uh, um, given what's happened over the last year.
Thank you councillor Tysus, I'll put this motion to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that lost. I'll come back to you councillor division, yeah, all those in favour? Councillor Tysus, councillor Fredericks, all those against? Councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelidis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marney, councillor Coleman, the matter was lost. I'll come to, back to you councillor Ring, foreshadowed motion.
Um, that, um, councillor's fee, councillor's fees and the mayor's fee um for twenty five, twenty six be set at, it's IPAD, isn't it, IPAD's three percent increase.
Are you looking at page twelve?
Yeah, 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 I'm, I am, I think that's, um,
So that, what are you, councillor, what are you actually moving? Is that the recommendation on top of page, like, not the administration, but there's a?
Well, we're in, we're in twenty, twenty five, looking at twenty five, twenty six financial year. The recommendation is to accept the three percent pay increase.
Yeah, which is that top page?
So what page are you saying that's from?
Page twelve.
Page twelve. Top of page twelve, except it does talk about twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah, so the dates are wrong.
Dates are wrong, so, yeah, sorry. Should have picked that one up. So, yeah. Um, if, if I could speak to it now, may?
So, yeah, just making sure you're clear on what you're moving.
Yeah, no, that's fine, the date's on that through me, that's why I was going off on a bit of a tangent.
Can we just have a look at that please? So you've got twenty five, twenty six, twenty five, twenty six. And the, it's being, it's increased, so it's the last figures. So that, that, that needs to change, that needs to change at the end of that recommendation. For the foreshadow, yeah, that's the foreshadow. It's not clear. It needs to be fifteen, four, fifty, it needs to be as per the recommendation, as per the recommendation on page twelve, up the top, the figures are on page twelve. Fifteen, fifteen, four, fifty, thirty two, seven, one, eight.
If I may move a point for me.
Sure, just, I'm just gonna try and get this, just hang on, I'm just trying to get this clear. Are we right now?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, um, councillor Tysus has a point four, councillor Ring, would you like to listen to that please?
I'm prepared to listen to it.
Councillor Tysus?
Uh, thank you, may, that, um, councillor Tysus and Fredericks um, set the remuneration for, uh, councillors Tysus and Fredericks at, uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
I don't think that's possible, can we have a comment on that, chief financial officer? I think we tried to do this before and it wasn't possible or something, can we just get some advice on it?
Yeah. Through you, Mayor Coleman, yeah, it's a setting a councillor fee, you can, um, choose to donate the surplus, um, handle it differently and you can do it as a deduction through payroll in that, in that regard.
So that's a bit difficult, is that what you're saying? Right, okay, so.
And I just asked why it's difficult?
Yeah.
When it's a council resolution, it's a council resolution.
It's not at this point.
So you'll have to move in as an amendment councillor Tysus. Councillor Ring, are you accepting that?
Well, 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 the advice we're getting from the fin- chief financial officer isn't that.
Yeah, okay, so you're not accepting it?
So no, I'm not accepting it.
All right, so you'll have to move an amendment.
Well, can I get some advice as to why it's not, because if it's a council resolution? If you look at the, if you look at the remuneration report, it talks about anything in that category.
Can we, someone answer councillor Tysus?
Why wouldn't the councils be separate?
Let's try and get an answer for you, councillor Tysus has a good, got a question, can we have it answered or not?
Uh, through you, may, as I understand it, the fee needs to be set consistently for all councillors. If a councillor chooses to not accept the amount they could donate as indicated by the director. In other words, what I'm saying is we can't set different fees for different councillors.
Okay, so we come back to the motion that's in front. So let's come back to the meetings, let's come back to the procedures. Councillor Ring, you, you are now moving that? Yeah, councillor Evangelis moved it, if you wish to move an amendment, you can, but you need to speak to it first councillor Ring, so please speak to it.
Actually, just advice, if councillor Tysus be happy to her fourth point to be for the administration to seek clarification from O L G, if a separate rate can be set.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Uh, through you, may, I've just found the, the section two, four, eight of the Local Government Act. Uh, number three, the annual fee so fixed must be the same for each councillor.
Yes, the Office of Local Government Act, okay, so that, answer that.
Thank you, but I move a different point for them.
Uh, okay, what would you like to move?
That council note, that councillor Tysus and councillor Fredericks will be donating the four hundred and fifty dollars to a charity. And that's a note, that's a note, you can, you've set the limit, this is just a note.
I'm not, I'm not accepting that.
You're gonna move an amendment, okay, so we, councillor Tysus can move his amendment. Councillor Ring, we'll come to you, you, please speak to your motion.
Thank you.
Um, we're a regional rural council. And on the fee range set by the government, regional rural council has a minimum of ten thousand five hundred and thirty, twenty three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Where we sit at the moment's roughly in the middle, probably a little bit less. And the last council, as with councillor Marney, my first meeting back, massive rate increase. And then there was a pay increase to councils, I opposed it. I opposed it because it showed a total lack of empathy to the community. When the proposal for a significantly increased came, I opposed it, I thought it was too much and it needed to be tested. Yeah, in the community. Unfortunately, I, I used this as part of my platform and quite frankly, there wasn't that much support or angst over it. Otherwise I would have got, because I actually went in hard on rates, on the pay rises, and it didn't reflect in the figures. Maybe no one likes me, or maybe no one was really thussed about these issues. End of the day, councillor Goodwin's right, if you're doing your job and you're doing it properly, you do a lot of work, it's a hell of a lot of work. Um, I'm on seven internal committees, six external plus three working parties. And I also attend a lot of, um, meetings and functions on behalf of the mayor. Three percent pay rise, most people in the community and in this organisation will get a pay rise. I don't consider it to be unreasonable, four hundred and fifty dollars a year, it's not even ten dollars a week. In pensions or index, they go up, other people's pay is go up. We're not here just for the love of it, we put in effort, we should be remunerated. And quite frankly, there are smaller councils adjoining us that pay their councillors the full amount. I think this council got, um, buried down in class politics for years, whilst Labour dominated by going, we'll go for the lower one, and by having miners on here who had significant funds. Bottom line is, we have the right role of directors, we're responsible for everything, the buck stops with us. We should be remunerated, a three percent increase is not significant.
Councillor Evangelidis?
Thank you, may. How do we become a regional strategic area? I think we're pretty strategic actually, it seems to be, everyone's giving us everything here. Um, I mean, we wouldn't even be paid the award wage per hour. We, we, uh, there's no way we'd get close to twenty five dollars or whatever it is per hour. Um, I know a lot of the councillors certainly wouldn't, so the three percent is really nothing. Um, and, um, yeah, thank you.
Any further debate, councillor Tysus had an amendment, would you like to move your amendment?
Yes, I'll move the amendment one, two, three and four. That council note, that councillor Tysus and councillor Fredericks will be donating to a charity the four hundred and fifty dollar increase, obviously simple as that.
Thank you councillor Tysus, um, a seconder? She's not in the room.
I'll, I'll second it.
Are you gonna, so councillor Goodwin or is going to second that? Okay, so did you wish to speak to it?
Listen, I'm happy for whatever, uh, councillor Tysus and councillor Fredericks do, does with their money.
Yeah, that, that's fine, uh, do we have any other discussion regarding the amendment? No, I have no problems in regards to the amendment either, I, what they choose to do is their choice, life's about choice. Um, I'll put the, um, unless you have a wish to speak against the amendment?
No, no, not just.
No, all right, I'll put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment? That amendment has now been carried. It now becomes the motion, so I'll come back to that motion, do we have any further debate on that, on the motion? Would you like to speak, anybody? No, all right, I'm going to put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried in full, yeah. So the division has been called, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marney, councillor Fredericks, councillor Tysus, councillor Coleman, it's been carried, thank you.
Uh, may I question, why are we calling the vision?
I have no idea, but we did it, besides, it gives me good practice. Um, two point four. So we have two point four, the D A is one, six, nine slash twenty four, thirty one Malvern Street.
I'll be leaving your room, may.
Yeah, so you're moving, you're leaving, yeah?
Yeah.
Off you go, thanks councillor Evangelis. So we've got, that's page sixteen, wait for councillor Evangelis to leave the room. Right, we have, there's a mo- do we have any motions, councillors?
Yeah, may, I'd like to, to move with an amendment.
Yep. What are you moving councillor Ring?
This is long, Trinity does have it, but I'll read it slowly. That development application D A one, six, nine stroke two, four, B approved. Subject to the standard council conditions with the following amendments. Those conditions are now being presented to all the councillors. Um, the amendments are, item two, approved plans and supporting documents include under approved plans. An updated demolition plan is to be provided to council for approval prior to the issue of construction certificate, see condition four. Include under building layout, an updated demolition plan is to be provided to council for approval prior to the issue of a construction certificate, see condition four. Include additional point four, that is four updated plans. Prior to the issue of a construction certificate, the applicant is to submit the following updated plans to council to show the retention of the chimney. A demolition plan, Claire Civil twenty twenty three dash one, zero, six, two, sheet A zero three, revision three, dated zero, five, twelve, twenty four. The plan is to be amended to confirm that the chimney will be retained. B, building layout plan, Claire Civil twenty twenty three dash one, zero, six, two, sheet A zero four, revision three, dated zero, five, twelve, twenty four. The plan is to be amended to show the chimney in its current location and relocation of the vanity. Delete option B of point twenty six, external colours and finishes and retain option A.
Is there a, a councillor Ring, are you second, you've ca- you've finished, yeah?
Uh, yeah, finished, I'm just waiting for a second.
I need a second, uh, councillor Goodwin seconding that. But you happy to speak to that now?
Uh, yeah, look, I'd just like to say that this might go on a bit and I might require an extension of time. Um, it caused what I proposed is different to what the council have recommended. We need to detail the reasons when, that I'm proposing uh, an alternate view, that's needed for legal and insurance issues, I believe. So I'm just, just putting that out there. Yeah, the determination to stay must be based on merit regardless of the owner or proponent. Uh, uh, basically, and, but if we recommend a different position to council, we have to justify it. For the benefit of councillors that do know, do not know my professional background. I have both a bachelor's and a master's degree in archaeology, I have over forty years' experience in heritage management. With most of my career focused on the management and adaptive reuse of state significant heritage sites. The current D A has been reviewed by an external planner and it has been refused solely in the basis of advice from council's heritage advisor. Heritage advice can be subjective and I support statement of heritage impact submitted with this D A. And the review undertaken by a local heritage planner of the issues raised by the advisor. I'd just like to point out to councillors, the statement of heritage impact is not part of the documents, reports that we get from councillors does not include all of the information submitted to council. Otherwise, those reports would be a hell of a lot longer than what we get, we get a summary. The D A was refused for the following reasons, which I do not believe are justified. First, the proposed development does not appropriately respond to unique heritage. First, the proposed development does not appropriately respond to unique heritage significance of the site in its relationship to the adjoining Wenbo. The statement of heritage impact not provided as part of the report to councillors more than adequately addresses these issues in relation to the proposed development. In the report, there's lots of discussions about lot one and lot two. Only lot one, on which Wenbo, the mansion is constructed, is listed on schedule five of the Lithgow L E P. And it claims that both lots should have been listed as one side is irrelevant. Legally, at this point in time, only Wenbo on lot two is listed as an item of local significance. The statement of significance of Wenbo in council's documents does not include the garage or gardens, it only refers to the building and its long association with the Bracy family. In determining the impact of proposed works on heritage listed items or works within the curtilage of the item, the works are assessed against the statement of significance. Why, why is the structure important? Will the works detract from that significance or importance? In accordance with standard heritage practices, the statement of heritage impact has prepared a statement of significance for lot one in the garage. Number thirty-one Malvern Street's significance lies in its association with the Wenbo houses, which has rare grandeur and Lithgow and on a state basis. The former servants cottage lies within the former gardens and plays a contributory role as part of the curtilage of the existing adjoining heritage item and as part of the wrenched residential streetscape of the federation era extension estate. It has historical significance and it represents an early twentieth century way of life when servants were essential workers in large households. The cottage is associated with the Br- Bracy family, who were prominent storekeepers in the local area. Second point it was rejected on, the proposed development has not appropriately, has not been appropriately located and designed to minimise impact on the heritage significance of the site. The design location of the addition respects the significance of the cottage by removing late additions and has less impact, visual impact on Wenbo from Malvern Street than the design proposed by the heritage advisor. That is in the documentation uh provided by council, page nine of the assessment. There will be minimal change to the eastern elevation as shown on drawing A O five of attachment two point four two. So when you're at the back of Wenbo, you're facing Malvern Street, basically what we're gonna see with this change is pretty much the same thing. You're gonna see a pink wall instead of one garage door, two garage doors, one. Lean to roof, there's gonna be virtually no difference. In my pres- personal opinion, this will have less impact on Wenbo than the suggestive alternative by the heritage advisor, which can be seen in the illustration on page nine of twenty-two of attachment two point four one. Third point, the proposed development does not appropriately integrate with the existing built form and landscape of the site and the adjoining associated lot, and therefore will have detrimental impacts on the heritage significance of the site. This is an outdated assessment and does not appear to have taken into consideration the New South Wales Heritage Council guidelines for the adaption of historic.
I need an extension, uh councillor Fredericks, uh sorry councillor Goodwin first and councillor Fredericks, if there's no opposition that's carried, please continue councillor Ring.
Historic buildings and sites, and I will quote from page eleven of those guidelines. Adaption does not mean imitation or following inflexible rules. A wide range of solutions to a design problem may emerge after careful analysis and sympathetic interpretation. Next point, the proposed development does not comply with the provisions of clause five ten of Lithgow Local Environment Plan. In my opinion, it does, particularly the objectives. The objective of this clause is to conserve the environmental heritage of Lithgow, to conserve the heritage significance of heritage items and heritage conservation areas, including associated fabric settings with use. As proposed by the proponent, it has minimal impact on Wenbo and actually benefits the existing gardeners' building and former cottage. The proposed development does not comply with heritage provisions of the Lithgow Development Control Plan. Um, there's quite a few of those, so. Basically, look, I don't agree with it, I'm happy to go through, if the councillors want me to go through each one, I will.
I, I don't think they're, I think they're pretty satisfied, or they can ask you questions later.
Okay, so I, I believe it does, and bottom line is, the development control plan does not relate. The heritage provisions don't relate to this building, it's not an item of heritage under the local, under the L E P. Given the heritage impacts, it is considered that the proposed development is not suitable for the site. Statement of heritage impact adequately demonstrates the impact on this site and concludes the proposed alterations and additions are predominantly located in some of the non-original parts of the building. The proposed works will have no impact on the significance of the site or the broader heritage precinct. The addition will have limited visibility from surrounding streets and will not be an intrusive or dominating structure when viewed from the garden Wenbo or from either story of the Wenbo heritage item house. The existing Wenbo building will retain its prominence and significance. The existing property and its many outbuildings will continue to contribute to assess the aesthetic, historic and social significance of the Ordinance Avenue and Malvern Street areas. Last point, given the heritage impacts, it is considered that the proposal is not in the public interest. Uh, look, I'm sorry, there's no legal requirement, we can't force anyone to maintain their houses. If this was a state significant building, there are avenues to forced maintenance works. As a lo- item of local heritage on our L E P, we have no provisions. So when you have these sort of um kickbacks, you're sending out a message to people that it's hard to actually adapt the heritage building it's not. If you look at the heritage guidelines from the heritage council, there's some fantastic work that's been done on buildings. Which puts us into proportion. If this was another person, and this has happened in places, council doesn't approve them, the changes, they leave the building to sit there and deteriorate. The building gets to a point where it's no longer viable to actually restore, and then they're justified in looking for demolition. We don't want that. We have a proposal that is going to be good for the heritage significant element of the proposal, the former cottage and garden shed. And in the end of the day, what has been proposed can be reversed. It does not have an inverse, in fact, that is why I believe we should support it. And I will provide my commentary for management so they've got it on file.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Goodwin, did you wanna add to that, you're the seconder?
Quickly, that um, I don't see anything wrong with councillor Evangelitis doing that. Um, if the reason that uh for it is to be refused on heritage items, council not so long ago allowed a house to be built in Silkstock Street without adhering to heritage items made by the council, so. I'm not, um, I'm not too particularly worried, it's, it's a pretty good uh development, so I'm gonna support it.
Thanks councillor Goodwin. Any further debate on this matter?
Uh, just, can I start with a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Is the applicant aware of this, what's been put here?
Uh, councillor Evangelitis aware, my understanding, councillor Ring?
Uh, no, he's aware I was looking at it and I was kind of um making a decision on it when I reviewed all the information.
So.
Uh, Mayor, I think um, um, I think it's um, I don't think it's appropriate for us to make conditions where the applicant has, has not been provided with a, what he wants to, to do with it, because of its um, uh, some of the things that are set out here, um, certainly need the applicant to give us a comment in regards to what is proposed in the motion, so um.
If I could.
Yes, councillor Ring?
I did clarify the chimney with councillor Evangelitis. Because in the report from council on the DA, it states clearly that the removal of the chimney was an error. I just confirmed that that was accurate.
Okay.
So the conditions are normal standard conditions that council would apply.
Okay.
There's nothing I believe unreasonable in them.
Righto, thank you councillor Ring. Another question?
Yeah, another question, even if we believe that it is or isn't, the reality is we need to give the applicant the opportunity to comment on it.
And the difficulty we have is that it's a councillor, so I'm not quite sure.
I, I'm not happy with the motion, with the resolution, because at the end of the day, he's got no say in it.
So, what are you proposing councillor Tyssus?
So, can I just respond to that?
Yeah.
This is actually what he wanted and proposed, I've read through all the literature and correspondence he has sent to council. This is exactly the outcome that he wants.
So, does that satisfy? So if that's, so what are you proposing councillor Tyssus? Are you proposing a different motion? I can't hear you, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what we've got here, that the development application B uh referred to the thirtieth of June meeting. And uh we asked the applicant in regards to their position in regards to what's been set out by councillor Ring and councillor Goodwin.
Are you happy with that councillor Ring?
Um, no, I'm not.
Okay.
Any, any delays cost money, the sooner this work can be done, the better.
Alright, so that's an amendment, you'll need to put that up as an amendment? Okay, so that's the amendment, I need a seconder for the amendment? If it, if I don't have a seconder, it laps. It laps, you need to, it laps, I'm sorry, but I didn't get a seconder, it laps. Okay, thank you. So, um councillor, councillor Ring, councillor.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Okay, thank you. Um, if I could through you, Mayor, to start.
Yep.
I'm, I'm accepting that there's considerable expertise in the room and, and, and what I've listened to. It's logic, um also, I've heard what councillor Tyssus has said, but we can't bring the councillor back into the conversation at this point. Now, I'm just trying to get my head around this. If we're, if we're, as a council, we're um endorsing as, as proposed with these conditions on it.
I might have a solution.
Well, I'm, I'm.
If we, if we can, my understanding of the code of meeting practice, if this is approved tonight, there is an option of rescission if the councillor doesn't actually like the outcome. So if the councillor doesn't like the outcome, there is an option of rescission tomorrow, as per the code of meeting practice, we can do that. Who, who? No, someone else can do it on his behalf. On planning, yeah, well, my understanding is that I, look, I'm in a position where we either defer it, it was lapse, or what, but then we come back, hang on, come back to councillor Marnie. Did you wanna ask a question? Yeah, so can someone answer councillor Marnie? That's really important. Mister Elwood?
Uh, through yourself, Mayor. The draft uh conditions of uh development consent or uh that are with councillors this evening, we have a process uh through uh the development team for development applications, as has been talked about, to work through conditions of uh approval or consent uh with applicants. Uh, that is based on uh sometimes applicants uh not uh getting the full agreement or from councillors to, uh sorry, from the development team uh as to what will be the consent conditions. This is a, a draft and the final uh work through uh with the applicant will follow as close as practically able uh the conditions that have been raised uh by councillors and have been put through. Uh, there may be some amendment to the actual section uh of the development uh approval of the consent conditions where the uh specific uh conditions are placed, they may be added to one or one or more uh of the sections within the consent. Uh, and what will also be reviewed again by uh the development planners to ensure that it actually meets uh the requirements of establishing a consent condition uh for development application if it's approved.
I can't hear you councillor Marnie, you need to put your microphone on.
One follow-up question before I lose it, the chain of thought. So we as councillors can discuss and recommend, but at the end of the day, it is staff that will place the conditions on the supported DA, is that my understanding?
Uh, the conditions that, if, if it is uh passed uh this evening by council, uh those conditions as close as possible uh will be inserted or added to in the consent. The discussion will still take place with the applicant to ensure that they are uh actually able to be practically uh implemented as part of a consent condition.
You're on now, Mayor?
Hang on, no, sorry, thank you councillor Fredericks, I'm sorry councillor Ring, but councillor Fredericks.
Um, I'm more of a visual person, is it okay if I quickly go over to councillor Ring to make sure what I think he's saying is actually what he's saying?
Sure.
I wanna foreshadow a, a amendment.
I don't, that's up to, does the staff have a problem with that? It has to be.
I.
Can the staff go out?
I have a problem.
We can't do that, so that's against it. I asked the question, they said no.
I have a recommend, uh, an amendment.
Sure. Yes, the council cannot discuss the matter with the councillor.
If I could just state that the conditions that have been provided to the council were not prepared by me, they were prepared by the staff.
Thank you.
And the changes proposed were provided to me by the staff.
By the staff, thank you. Any, any further, you wanted to do an amendment councillor Tyssus?
Yes, thank you Mayor, I move that uh, uh one, development application DA double oh seven two four be approved subject to conditions and that such conditions be deferred for the administration to provide the council's consideration at the thirtieth of June ordinary meeting of council. And the division be called in accordance with the principles of three seven five A, three in brackets of the local government.
Thank you, seconder? So councillor Fredericks seconding that amendment, which is basically you're deferring the decision until you speak to the applicant. So councillor Tyssus?
Yeah, thank you Mayor, this just solves the whole problem where we've got the guarantee that he's, he's happy with it. Uh, the staff are going to talk to him about it and uh we can come up with a set of conditions that are going to move visiting board rather than us making the uh all separate conditions to go in the thing, so the whole thing's signed, sealed, delivered at the next meeting and uh we should be okay.
And it's approved and you talk to the applicant and read it. Um, that's what you're alluding to. Councillor Fredericks?
Yeah, I, I think that's self-explanatory, I understood what um councillor Ring was saying. But this way it goes back, I'm pretty sure this goes back to Tom's original, sorry, councillor Evangelist's original DA. And it also gives time for that back and forth between the submitter and council to actually come up with a, a balance, I guess. That way everyone's happy, everyone's on the same level.
Sure, and if, who wishes to speak in, so speaker for, speaker against?
Againsts.
Councillor Ring, councillor Goodwin, would you like to speak against councillor Ring?
To speak against, look, the conditions, as I said, were provided to me from the staff. I didn't make them up. Um, they're aware and I spoke with the staff about my concerns and my issues and that I was going to move changes. They provided me and I asked them for a set of conditions that could be tabled tonight, so this matter could be expedited. This council has done this before.
Thank you councillor.
The, the conditions that we've got are basically what council is gonna bring back anyway.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, I know, a few developers and, and time is money, um, the longer we delay it, the longer it, it takes for and the, and the more cost it is to the developer, so I'm, we're here to make a decision tonight, I'm happy to make that decision.
Thank you councillor Goodwin, any further debate on the actual amendment? No, I'm gonna put the amendment, all those in, councillor Fredericks, please. All those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand. All those against? The amendment has been lost, we come back to the original motion. If there's no further debate, I'm going to put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? Let's come back, I'm gonna come back for councillor Fredericks, so I'm putting councillor Ring's motion for you councillor Fredericks. So it needs to come back on the screen, that's probably where we're a little bit lost, is that right? It's on the screen now? Now it is, we're good, right. Okay, I'll put that, I'm gonna put that, are you right councillor Fredericks? Yeah, we're putting forward councillor Ring's original motion. I'm gonna put that, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, it's a planning issue, my understanding it needs a division, we need to, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Goodwin, councillor Ring?
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
That is not in the motion.
No, but my understanding, planning needs to have it.
Yeah, I know, but it's gotta be number two, it's gotta be, it's gotta be numbered.
Well, it wasn't stated, so it's been carried, we don't need a division unless the councillor calls it. We do, so I need a division to, I need a division called on it. We do, so I need a division to, I need a division called on it. Uh, we can add a point two, so the point two is that a division is called. Are you happy with that?
Look, I'm happy, but it's a planning issue legally.
Legally, it has to have a division and a councillor can call a division, so I will call a division. So I'm calling a division, all those in favour? Councillor Goodwin, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Coleman, all those against? Councillor Tysus, the matter has been carried, please call councillor Evangelist in. Just waiting for two councillors, thank you. Matt, could you pop out and see what's going on? Oh, no, here we go. Don't pop out anywhere. Thank you. Item two point five, investment report, April twenty twenty five, uh, page twenty three, any motions councillors?
Happy to move it.
Happy to, is there a second up? Councillor Goodwin, councillor Ring?
Uh, no, this was discussed in detail at the last finance meeting. Uh, I'm more than satisfied with the report.
Thank you. Councillor Goodwin?
No.
Nothing there. Any further commentary on this report? Page twenty three for the others, if there's any further commentary, no? I'll put it to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Two point six, which is the March twenty twenty five quarterly budget review.
Happy to move it, Mayor.
Um, so the motion you're moving is?
As written.
As written. Um, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure, hang on, I'll just, I need a second after this. Councillor Marnie?
Have questions as well, Mayor.
So I'll come back to you councillor, when you moved it, please speak to it if you like.
Sorry, this was discussed in detail at the finance committee, we spent a fair bit of time on it. Uh, I did have a number of questions that I asked at that meeting and I'd like to ask them publicly so they're on record, not anyone watching. Um, it's aware that we actually do read things. Um, so through you to the administration, the first question is. Please clarify the significance of the deficit discussed on page twelve nineteen of the quarterly budget review. I'll ask them one at a time.
Chief Financial Officer?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Um, so the deficit, um, projected at two point one million dollars as a result of, um, income being received in the prior year. In relation to the pot hole program, but expenditure occurring this year, without that impact, we would have had a one point two million dollar surplus.
Thank you.
So just for clarity, that's only a paper deficit, we haven't lost money. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Browning. Any further councillor Ring?
Yeah, I do, I have another three questions. Can you explain, please explain the seventeen thousand dollar deficit in the water budget on page four nineteen? Of the quarterly budget.
Mrs Browning?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Um, yeah, so that's an improvement of three K on the previous quarter, and so. There was a couple of expenditure items that were unexpected during the year, um, what, um, myself and, um, the direct. Uh, the executive manager of water, wastewater and, um, waste. Uh, it was looking at the ten year program where we had a bit more of a contingency built in for unforeseen events.
Uh, did that over expenditure include the, um, sludge removal over the Christmas period?
Through you, Miss Browning? Or who's gonna answer that? Oh, count, uh, Mister Trap?
Through you, Mayor. Um, no, that was based on the sewer fund.
Alright, okay, sorry. Uh, my bad. Um. Please explain how the water fund on page eight, um.
Page eight.
Uh, page eight of the quarterly review.
Sorry.
That the year-to-date, um, figures are four point one seven nine million. Yet the predicted end-of-year result is three point six five eight million. That's a significant difference.
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Uh, that's relating to internal, um, say, water used by council facilities that are adjusted at the end of the year.
Does that need to be in the reports next year like that? Can it be taken out at the beginning?
I think we could make a, a forecast, um, to that, it would go through the September coiler review though.
Yeah, no, that's fine, thank you. Uh, last question is the capital budget on page ten, um. Looking at it, it shows that the rates and other untied funding, uh, they're, they're basically the significant source of capital works. Does this mean that the rates are used to fund capital works for water, sewage and waste?
Yes, Mrs Browning?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Um, no, so they're ring fenced, so the water, waste and, and wastewater funds are separated. So any capital works undertaken by them, um, are funded in those, um, reserves unless a, a, um, resolution of council has occurred.
Can we ask where that's shown in the report?
This is in line with the structure, um, um, through the O L G and it's not very clear.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring, is that further, yeah, okay. Councillor Marnie? You've got no questions or commentary? No, no, sorry, I didn't hear, I can't hear you councillor Marnie without your microphone on.
My apologies, Mayor, no.
Thank you. Councillor Fredericks, there, there councillor Tysus had questions as well. So councillor Tysus?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted some clarification on, uh, page twenty eight, uh, two hundred and fifty K. Deferral for grant funding associated with the timing of delivery for the A B C D committee hall, where are we up to with that? That's the hall at, at, at Clarence, I think, is it not?
Can, uh, thank you councillor Tysus, Mrs Browning?
Uh, through you, Mayor Coleman, I have to take the specific progress on that, um, project itself on notice. Um, I believe there, um, have overcome a hurdle recently in terms of being able to start, um. Proper planning and associated with that community hall, but I would take that on notice.
Thank you. And further councillor Tysus?
Second question, a hundred thousand dollar increase for the Cromer Park, I gather that's, it's cost us a hundred thousand dollars. Extra to put the wall back together. And what's the update for that? Are we, are we any further to resolving who's responsible or not?
That's a good question. Councillor, who's gonna answer that? The general manager?
Uh, through you, Mayor, sorry again, we, we, without the director of infrastructure and economy here, we would need to take that on notice too. So we, uh, send a memo to councillors on those two as soon as possible. That, that cost would have been mainly for the investigation, but there, there were actions, um, being pursued to recover. At least part of that, but I don't have an update.
Thank you councillor Tysus. Councillor Fredericks?
Yeah, um, just on page thirty of sixty two, um, it's under the savings of a hundred K or more on, on projects. Um, from my understanding, anything to do with the N B N was done federally. So what's the Okeapark N B N connection to Flow Meter about?
That's, yeah, who's gonna answer that for me? Councillor Trap? Uh, councillor Trap, sorry, let me rephrase that. It's been a long day, I've been up since five. Anyway, Mister Trap.
Through you, Mayor. So that project was to bring a flow meter online at the, um, back end of the Okeapark Water Treatment Plant. We initially put in the budget to be able to do the N B N connection ourselves. We were able to luckily jag, um, the N B N connecting it for us. And then carrying out a lot of the works internally rather than using contractors, so I'm able to make some pretty big savings along the way.
Are you happy with that councillor Fredericks? Yeah, thank you for that question. It's, any further questions on this matter? No? Any further debate? I don't, write a reply, I don't think there's much to reply to councillor Ring.
No, just put it.
Thank you. I'll put it to you, all those in favour? Uh, councillors, we're voting, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, thank you. Alright. Hey, uh, we're up to two point seven. Which is the draft policy categorizations of land as farmland for rating, page thirty two. Any motions councillors?
You need to wait to read.
Oh, hang on, we need to wait for councillor Smith. Sorry councillor Smith. Any motions? Yes. You're happy to move it? Excellent. Councillor Fredericks is moving the, are you moving the recommendation on the page? Yes, councillor Fredericks. Is there a second up? Councillor Ring, councillor Fredericks, would you like to speak to this space?
Uh, look, it's pretty basic from what I can understand. Um, I will reinforce this isn't targeting actual farmers. This is just making it a bit fairer for actual farmers. Um, I did wanna bring attention to page thirty five, the table. Um, property value thirty seven thousand three hundred, farmland rate six fifty eight sixty one, residential other four forty eight O one. Annual difference, brackets, two ten sixty, I'm assuming it's meant to be back the other way?
Is that a question, I'm assuming, can, um, Mrs Browning?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Coleman. Um, it, it's, um, there is a certain value, we're actually going to residential, residential other will be cheaper. Because of the base amount that's with farmland, um, and that's what we talked about in terms of reviewing how we structure the base amounts. When we look at the rebau data at the end of the calendar year, um, so yeah, that, that's for those very low valued properties, they, that, that's. It's the reverse of the, the, the normal trend because of the impact of the base amounts.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Would, did you have any further on that? No, you're happy? Yep, great. Councillor Ring?
Any rate discussion is unpopular, but regrettably needs to be had. Only farms as defined by the local government act are included in the farmland rating category. All other properties must be rated as rural residential other or as business as per the local government act. I went back and checked the legislation. When the new, uh, um, local government act was brought in in nineteen three, this section was there. Prior council administrations have failed to update their practices when legislation was changed. Unfortunately, we've got diligent staff who went and checked it and have brought it to our attention. Now, I've challenged and questioned the implementation of this rating policy over the past twelve to, to eighteen months since I've been back on council. But I've not been able to find any basis on which a council could move to reuse its implementation. The public exhibition, as stated on page thirty three of sixty two, significantly exceeds council's twenty eight days, eighty four days. Inclusive of several public sessions. The administration need to be commended on that. Plenty of opportunities provided to people to understand this. How many residents are affected? One thousand one hundred and forty seven. But only a percentage of those will be impacted on, they will be the people who are not meeting the farm requirements. However, moving forward, if they introduce farming practices, they can go back to a farming rating category. Um. New land valuations that you have released, I believe later this year, and as point three on page thirty seven states. Council's rating structure will be reviewed once the land valuations are released to determine the total amount of rates to be collected from each category. Rates, fees and charges will be moving forward. Constant agenda items for the finance committee for the remainder of this council term. Rates are complex, fees and charges are complex. I tried to get it as part of the finance committee in the last council, didn't get it up. This time round, it's there. We will be actively reviewing business cases moving forward, so we understand the fees and charges and the rates. And that means going back and having discussions about rate harmonization, which were in the original rating document. And were discussed when the rate increase were brought in. Now, the funding model for local governments is based on a state imposed land tax on unimproved value that is neither fair nor equitable. Nor is the concept of capacity to pay clearly defined. It's a complex model that's outlived its time. And both state and federal governments need to address the funding of local governments in the future. This must be an ongoing advocacy issue, not just from our council, but from all councils. We need to be continually pushing the change to the model because we get penalized. What I have had is discussions with the chief financial officer in the finance committee about. How we assist particularly elderly residents who may have been farmers. But no longer farm because of age and frailty. And how we can provide them additional support. So that's something we are still pursuing, which is why I'm happy, well, not happy, but why I'm supporting this.
Thank you councillor Ring. Any further debate on this matter? Councillor Goodwin?
I've just got a couple of questions, uh, Mayor Coleman. Um, and they're questions that I probably should have asked at the information session. But are we the first council to do this?
That's a good question. Can, Mrs Browning, can you answer that?
Mayor Coleman, certainly not. Um, so it's, um, pretty standard practice in councils and many of them, what we are doing above is actually having a policy in place. So you'll find most councils won't have a policy that actually provides a guideline in terms of what the criteria are. Most just apply the legislation itself.
Any further questions councillor Goodwin? Yeah, hang on councillor Goodwin. Councillor Goodwin, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't have the turn on. So probably confirmation more than a question, but people who own multiple blocks. Um, can apply to have them adjusted to the one rate if the blocks are joined, um. For just, uh, uh, like those anomaly types of situations.
Mrs Browning?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. As, as long as the, the properties are adjoining, um, and it's an application's made for the V G S to amalgamate the properties. Under the full rating purposes.
Does that satisfy you councillor Goodwin? And, um.
I just wanted to add to what the chief financial officer said in relation to councillor Goodwin's first question. I looked at all the councils, mostly all the regional rural councils as part of my research, I only found four councils with a policy in yourself ones. That's it.
That's interesting to note. Thank you. Are you happy with that? Yeah. Any further?
I've got a question.
Yeah, uh, councillor Tysus?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, uh, get, if I can get some advice in regards to how the implementa- implementation will occur. Whether it will be on the first of July this year or whether it will be slowly progressed as, uh, these properties tell us what they're doing. And, and finally, it'll all be done in the next one, each a year, so we should have it all up to date by the first of the July twenty six.
Thank you councillor Tysus. Mrs Browning?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Uh, I believe it's in the report, um, what we're proposing to do, send the, um, the applications out, um. Probably over the, the, the next month or so, um, and then provide ninety days for the application to be submitted. Um, and then the rates will be adjusted for those that don't, um, submit an application or don't meet farmland, um, criteria, um, the following rating quarter.
Thank you. Councillor Marnie?
Uh, just briefly, um, I, through, through you, Mayor, to the staff, the, eh, expecting a certain amount of. Self, uh, exclusion from farmland rates or is it, it's something that you're seeing that's going to be a case by case? In, I'm just interested if there's any trend shaping up in front of you at this stage.
Mrs Browning?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. Um, we've already had sixteen people fess up to say that they don't make farmland and, and should have their category updated, which, um, that has occurred.
Councillor Marnie?
Yeah, just, uh, 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 another couple of comments. Um, I think people are appreciating that some of the detail that was initially being proposed to be collected. Was perhaps excessive in their minds and, um, so I appreciate that that's been condensed down. Um, there's a couple of little things which, um, just the role of the livestock, um, sorry, um. Health and Pest Authority and the L L S just seems to be, find out the local land service, but other than that. Um, I think made some progress on where the policy's gone during the, uh, public exhibition period.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Any further commentary on this? Okay, I'll put it to you, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Can we please ask councillor Smith to come back in? No, no, we've got a few more to do. Okay, so two point nine, we're. Main Street Footpath Renewable Update, page forty three.
Excuse me, Mayor, two point eight.
We're going into closed council at the end of.
Oh, okay, sorry, apologies.
No, I foreshadowed a motion that would avoid that. I did indicate it at the start.
Okay, so we'll have to come to?
If you go to two point eight, I'll give you a recommendation.
Okay, so we're going to, he, he did actually foreshadow. So councillor Tysus, your foreshadow, please?
Uh, yeah, I foreshadowed a motion. This is the recommendation that I, I want on this one. The council requests the director of finance and governance to provide an updated management review on the communications. In relation to the loss of the Building Better Reasons Fund Grant for the revitalization of the Main Street Footpath. At the thirtieth of June twenty five ordinary meeting of council. In other words, the next meeting with the inclusion and consideration. In other words, the next meeting with the inclusion and consideration in the review of the council's directive infrastructure and economy public statements to the Lithgow City Council's Economic Development Committee meeting livestreamed on Wednesday, the nineteenth of June twenty four, that was attended by the then mayor and councillors, and available on councillor's webpage. That hasn't been included in this report. I, I think it's appropriate to be included. I think, uh, councillor, former councillor Leslie uh, spoke to it from the public gallery as well, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's what he was getting to anyway. So it's just to, to have that come back and then see what the report brings.
Council, I'm assuming councillor Tysus, that'll have to go into class council if it comes back. Yeah, yeah. So I'm happy to second that myself.
Okay, I was gonna second it.
No, I'm going to second that.
Okay, you can second it.
Thank you. Back to you, councillor Tysus, I think.
I don't, I don't intend to speak to it because I think the, uh, the report that brought needs to be updated and, uh, once that's brought in, we can see where we go.
Yeah, I don't wish to speak to it at the moment either.
Move the motion, be put.
Yes, absolutely. Unless there's anybody else who wishes to speak to it? No? Okay, so we'll put that, all those in favour? All those against declare that carried. We don't need to do two point eight now. Thank you. Um, we're up to two point nine, which is the Main Street Footpath Renewable Update, page forty-three. Any motions, councillors?
Happy to move the recommendation.
Is there a seconder? Councillor Goodwin, thank you. Councillor Ring?
Okay, I think it's a good report about the way forward. Um, a few weeks ago, I actually walked Main Street with the relevant director from Esbank Street down to Supercheap, then back up the other side. We visited every business. We discussed the proposal for spraying a textured coloured bitumen onto the footpath and basically were supported by pretty much every business. There was one business where a staff member on there was a bit antsy at the first about rate rises and other things. And once we had a discussion with her, um, she was on board. Most are happy to see something being done to make it safe. Um, and I, I, I think this project will end up actually the whole project, not just the concreting of the, the southern side. But the making safe for the whole Main Street will have a positive impact on retail in the area.
Thank you, councillor Ring. Councillor Goodwin, would you like to speak to this?
No, it's, it's a great report. Um, it'd be good if, if, uh, federal member, Mr. G, would jump on board and fund this up, fund the next, um, part of the, uh, the Main Street renewal.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Let's, you'll need to speak to the current federal labour government and get some um, consideration on that. Um, is there any further commentary on this? No? I'll put the, have you put it? Okay, so I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against declare that carried? So we're up to three point two, which is page forty-six.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I raise this as, uh, one that I wanted to speak to. I understand last week that the, um, who, it's the, um, Crown Leans Reserve Fund notified, um, uh, applicants that, uh, whether they'd received funding or not. I understand the council uh, may have received a favourable, uh, indication to, that they were going to get the money for the, the women's to finish off the women's shed. Is that the case or?
I just, I need to ask you what you're moving first, councillor.
I'm asking you a question.
Are you just gonna ask a question?
Yes, I.
You're gonna move it as is and then I'll get a seconder and then we'll come to the question here, question. So councillor Tysus, councillor Ring, question, did the administration get that? Or we need to, do you need to take it on notice? Okay, so, um, Mrs. Browning, you're all taking that on notice, councillor Tysus? Councillor Tysus, I can't hear you. I'm sorry, your mic.
Yes, I, I understand it was all announced last week, uh, where the applicants were receiving notification last week and I understood that the, uh, inference was that the council may have received the grant. So I just wanted to find out whether they did or didn't. Thank you.
Can we, we'll, we're committed to take that on notice. All right. So councillor, have you got anything further to say councillor Tysus? No, you're happy with that? Councillor Ring?
Uh, if there's no opposition, just put it.
Okay, so is there any further commentary on this before I put it? Councillors? No? Okay. I'll put the two, all those in favour. All those against declare that carried. Thank you. Right, we are up to questions we've noticed, which is on page fifty-two, four point one. Councillor Tysus, advertising financial information, you've got your response councillor Tysus. Would you like to ask questions in regards, in regards to that? Page fifty-two, you like?
Uh, no questions, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So that's been, that's fine, we move on. Questions we've noticed, uh, four point two councillor. Hang on, that was four point one. Four point two councillor Tysus with, uh, Western Sydney Uni intent to cease operations fifty-four. Have you got your response councillor? Would you like to ask any questions? You're right? Okay, so that's, we move on from there. We have four point three question we've noticed councillor Tysus Lithgow Golf Club lease, page fifty, fifty-five, is it? Fifty-five, yes. You have your response councillor, would you like to have any questions?
Uh, I just wanted to confirm that there's a report coming to the next council meeting on the thirtieth of June in regards to it.
Um, can we have a response regarding councillor Tysus's questions? Question?
I'd be for Mr. Edgcombe, I think. I don't know, and he's not here, so.
He's not here. Are you happy for us to take that on notice? We'll take that on notice?
Yep.
Are you right? Did you get that? General manager? He's gonna speak anyway. Can you, would you like to speak to it anyway? All right.
Uh, through you, Mayor. I, I understand that there would also be a report going to the next infrastructure committee meeting as, as well, on just a, an update on where it's at and.
Yeah.
Thank you. You happy with that?
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take it on notice as far as a, a report for the next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, question on notice. Councillor Marnie, future use of council buildings Charles, Charles Hosken Memorial Institute building and former selling building. Page fifty-seven, I believe councillor Marnie, you have your question and your response. Would you like any questions regarding your response councillor Marnie?
No, I won't. And just noting also, it's information in four point two, which is relevant in councillor Tysus.
Thank you councillor Marnie, that's been done. All right, so five point one we've done. Five point two is notice a motion councillor Marnie, investigations of workforce accommodation options as part of the development of Lithgow City Council's housing strategy. So over to you councillor Marnie.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm ob- obviously happy to move it.
And I need a second or a councillor. Uh, councillor Fredericks is learning. She's even giving me tips, which is fabulous. So would you like to second it councillor, um, Fredericks? So councillor Fredericks is seconding that. I'm sorry to interrupt you councillor Marnie.
No, that's fine. And thank you councillor Fredericks. Um, I'm going to speak to her briefly. Uh, the recommendation of the motion is that Lithgow City Council housing strategy currently planned for completion, take account of the following recommendations. Um, that workforce accommodations options be investigated at all scales, including larger industry scaled opportunities both in, in both the urban centres of Wularawang and Lithgow. Um, obviously there, uh, that's point two, the workforce accommodation options are favoured that demonstrate the capacity to transition into housing types that address the existing and future gaps in housing needs across the broader local community. And that a local housing forum be developed as part of the consultation process in the, process in the development of the Lithgow City Council housing strategy. Um, I think most councillors will be aware that this has been particularly strong interest of mine. Um, I think we're now finding, um, as the opportunities are rising to be realised that we may in fact not be able to house people when they arrive to work here. Um, the other element is there is a housing demand in the market and I'm whilst pedantic. Um, I'm very specific about housing needs, which is a separate issue. Um, we have our, our, our largest workforce, which is aged care and healthcare providers. Uh, we've got housing subdivisions that don't meet their housing needs. And, um, I've, I'd like to see us as a council challenge ourselves and have a focus around the emerging industries and making sure that we produce housing stock that meets their needs. Um, I think the opportunities to look at if, um, large construction workforces are realised in our L G A, that the two centres of growth, as I'm sort of seeing it. Wularawang, there's a lot of blank canvas moments out there waiting to be realised. We need to be able to house the workforce in the locality. Um, I listened to ideas of different people about how you then go to transitioning that employment housing into meeting, uh, future housing needs. So I'm just asking that these points be considered. Um, I note that we as a council are going out and having, uh, invited forums with groups. I, I think this provides like the health forum and other, other, um, uh, segments, it gives us an opportunity to invite and have that conversation with the body of expertise we've got out there. Um, I think it's important we don't develop these things in isolation as a council, that we're in amongst our community and both a, a range of different housing sectors as well as workforce accommodation. And where do we deal with as far as tourism accommodation? Have we got that capacity? Can we run major forums and conferences when we've got five motel rooms available? Um, so really need to look at all those industry sectors and their accommodation, um, needs.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Councillor Fredericks?
I mean, you've just got to look at the recent, um, is the shutdown of Mount Piper, the recent one? All of our hotels were booked up. Um, there were people still online asking if there was any residences they can stay. A couple of our locals went, I've got a room, I'll put you up. So I think that coming up with a way for workforce accommodation, i- it's not solely aiming at taking that kind of revenue out of our hotels and motels. But it's giving them a little bit of breathing space because I know a lot of them were quite upset that they had to turn people away because they were poor. So I think that, um, is, is something that we should look into definitely. And it, it's not just a short term solution, it can actually end up being a long term solution as well, so.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Any further commentary on this matter? Yes, councillor Evangelist?
Um, can I just ask a question of planning? Is there, with, with companies wanting to build working camps, is there a way or are we allowed to specify that whatever they build has to be of a certain quality that can be used for future housing? Because I mean, I, I've seen very temporary builders accommodation. But I just thought, do we have that ability to instruct them that if you're gonna build something, it needs to be solid?
Thank you, Mr. Elwood.
Uh, through yourself, Mayor. Uh, so the first, uh, piece is that we as council, uh, are guided by, uh, the, uh, the national building standards and, uh, other requirements for, uh, sanitary, uh, facilities and, and the like. So there's a mi- there is a minimum standard that, uh, any construction for accommodation, uh, either, even if it's of a temporary nature, uh, or a more permanent nature need to meet. And that's the minimum standard, um, that would need to be worked through. Uh, council, um, the planning staff and development staff would be working, uh, with any developer uh, that approached council to, uh, consider options like that, where, against those minimum standards and then against the range of other environmental, uh, be it a natural environment, uh, social or, uh, built environment, uh, concerns that then would be brought up. Uh, the, our planning documents, uh, what the L E P, our development control plan, uh, also provide a range of guiding, uh, principles and documents. The, that's the long way to, uh, say there could be options to consider and work with a developer uh, to exceed the standards, um, that they may be required to develop to. Uh, but that would be with the developer and, uh, also with council as well. Uh, but at a base level, our guiding documents, uh, the regulatory, uh, guidelines and requirements uh, for building construction, uh, will guide the process in the first instance.
Um, ca- uh, hang on, before we move on, the general manager wish to add to that, wishes to add to that.
Through you, Mayor. There, there may be cases if we're talking about workforce accommodation too, where the council may not be the planning authority, if, if it's included as part of the, uh, complete state significant infrastructure, for example.
Thank you. Uh, thank you councillor Evangelist. Any further on this matter?
Just wanted to add that there, there will be a working party established with the emerging economy. Um, which will continue work that I started with several major proponents in the area to look at how we can maximise benefit out of a centralised workers' camp and how we can get, uh, benefit for the community. So there is work going on in the space, but it's still very early days. But there is considerable support. A centralised, uh, workers' camp would also save businesses the cost of replicating. The last one, we want as half a dozen workers' camps across the, the area.
Thank you councillor Ring. Any further on this matter? Would anybody like to speak further on them? No? Um, I'll come back to you councillor Marnie for your final comments.
Uh, just a, a quick wrap up, but I thank councillor Ring for the work that's gone on to date. And, um, so it's critical as a bit of foundational conversations and planning and, and also councillor Fredericks rightly uh, talks to the pulses of work that'll come in and our, 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 our current sort of structural weakness. And we've got to look at where does, um, where does Airbnb's play a role in both tourism and workforce accommodation as far as absorbing some of those, those pulses? But we, I, I just feel like there's lots of opportunities potentially arriving over the horizon. And we haven't done the foundational planning. And I'll be quite honest, it's probably about eight years overdue, but, um, and I'd sort of hope that those people who visited, uh, down into Victoria had a look at some of the housing strategies surrounding Latrobe City Council, um, how they're dealing with infilling um, into areas like what we've had in front of us tonight, is it, you know, um, and what does small houses play a role? And there's some really quite interesting existing, uh, examples out there in the landscape that are being built by developers or builders, um, that are providing opportunities. So I, I'd see it as a, you know, a conversation. And I'm hoping that we do get a forum and if it builds on some of the stuff councillor Ring's done, all power to it. And, um, but I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Thank you councillor Marnie. I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against declare that carried? Uh, business of great urgency, is there any councillors? Uh, councillor Goodwin, yes?
Yeah, Mayor Coleman, I've a couple. Um, I'm hearing whispers that the H D U or the I C U unit, it will be closed for a significant period of time due to upgrades. Um, that may have a significant impact on workers, Ambers and, uh, locals. Can we find out if this is the case and what are their plans and what will be the communication?
Yeah, Mr. Elwood said that he can do that administratively for you. Are you happy with that?
Yep.
Yep.
My other one is, um, with the upgrade of the Great Western Highway down through Hartley, the Lollybug, Hartley Valley takeaway and all those businesses have been impacted. Is there any potential way we can advocate for, there's an offshoot road that's a kilometre or so back from going, advocate for signs that say the Lollybug?
I am aware, and I'll, the general manager will correct me in a minute. My, my understanding is that Transport for New South Wales is actually meeting with the businesses tomorrow. They're actually me- on this particular issue councillor Goodwin. So if you're happy, would you like the administration to come back to an update with all of the councillors? Yep, you're happy with that? Um, just before, did you want to add to that, general manager? No? I, I got that right. Councillor Goodwin?
My last one is, um, the pothole down at Glen Davis, um, colloquially known that named as, uh, Steve's Big Ring, is that?
Well, we might just remove that, but yes.
That's trademarked.
Is that, um, is that my fix?
Might, yes. Can we get a response?
Uh, my understanding is they've all been repaired down there. I've had residents contact me on some of the side streets where there've been big ones and they're being repaired. But they might keep the, uh, Steve's Big Ring down there.
Can we not refer to that, please?
Oh.
Um, so the, we can take that on notice as well and come back to remember. Are you happy with that councillor Goodwin? All right, is there, if there's no further urgent business, we'll end on that. Thank you councillors. Yes, quick?
Um, just quickly, and I'm happy if this just gets done behind doors and that. But, um, can we have a look at possibly looking at the road leading into Lithgow High because it's becoming a bit too, uh, yeah. If, if you want to go into labour, go on that road.
Can you bring that, when's the next infrastructure committee meeting? Do we know? I think it's actually next week, but we'll take, take that on notice and we'll actually have that funneled through the infrastructure committee meeting. Are you happy with that? Absolutely. Absolutely, thank you councillor Fredericks, if there's no further, um.